Good afternoon, everybody. Would you please stand for the prayer? Creator and sustainer of all things and all people, you are the source of all wisdom and light, enlightening our minds to receive your guidance so that you may lead us into true wisdom. May all that we say and do in the service of this county, whether as elected member or as an officer, be in accordance with your will and for the good of your people. Amen. Good to settle down, please. A little bit of housekeeping, thank you. A little bit of housekeeping, evacuation procedure. In the event of having to evacuate, officers will be able to advise and be on hand to assist any people with disabilities. Mobile phones, may I ask all members who have mobile phones with them to ensure that they are switched off so they're not disturbed in meeting. There's quite a lot to get through today, so obviously we're going to be cracking on a little bit. Everyone's going to get their say. Obviously, it's going to be run correctly. So straight into agenda item number one, chairman's announcements, Armistice. There's quite a lot of this, I'm afraid. The County Council marked Armistice Day with a service and a two-minute silence on Tuesday 11th of November. The short and dignified service was very moving, and I would particularly like to thank Leanne Plummer for playing the last post at Rivalley so competently. I was also pleased to see that County Hall was illuminated in red for the duration of the Royal British Legion's poppy appeal. Finally, I'd like to thank those members who are able to attend local services on remembrance Sunday and lay a county council wreath. On the 6th of November at Bosworth Battlefield, I was delighted to unveil over 3,200 hand-knitted poppies which have been handcrafted in schools, homes, community groups and libraries. They just look fantastic. King's Award for Voluntary Service. I am pleased to inform members, if they're not already aware, that four local voluntary organisations have been awarded the King's Award for Voluntary Service. The announcement was made on the 14th of November to mark the King's birthday. The King's Award for Voluntary Service holds the same value as an MBE and acknowledges the remarkable efforts of volunteer groups in their communities. The winning organisations were Ashford Bee Amateurs Ladies, Girls' and Inclusive Football Club, based in Melton. The club provides a welcoming and safe environment for all abilities and aids us to develop their skills through football, setting their community up for future success. The second was Bright Hope in Swanington. The charity is committed to serving the community by providing a range of free and accessible support, including adult social care, counselling, wellbeing support service and a community cafe in a purposely built day centre. Heather Scare Festival, a week-long annual scarecrow festival open to residents, businesses and schools in Heather to raise funds to support local groups that serve the village. The festival provides creative activities, social cohesion and financial support to the local community. And finally, there was also a winner in Leicester City. Sharma Women's Centre, based in Leicester, has been recognised for the work they do in supporting women to gain independence through education, training, counselling and peer support. I'm sure members will wish to join me in congratulating all the organisations for their award. They should really be proud of themselves. John Sinnett. John Sinnett is retiring from the county council after today's meeting, marking the end of an era in local government leadership. He was appointed chief executive in 1994 and is the longest-serving chief executive in the country. During this time, he has overseen significant organisational change, managed numerous financial challenges and ensured that the council maintains strong performance and stability. John successfully led the council through the last government reorganisation in 1997. Following a number of years of no overall control, he played a critical role in brokering discussions that led to the first joint administration following reorganisation. He implemented a wide range of important corporate improvements which led to the council being named council of the year in the 2009 Local Government Chronicle Awards, as well as achieving the highest rating of four-star, improving strongly when national council rating systems were in place. John has been at the helm for many notable achievements for the county, including the re-intervention of King Richard III, the 2012 Olympic torch relay and the council's trio of in-power awards, which recognise value for money. As the clerk to the Lord Lieutenant, he coordinated efforts to pay our local tributes to the late Queen. John demonstrated strong leadership through the Covid pandemic, which put a great strain on the county and tested councils up and down the country. John's calm approach steered us through that difficult time. Under John's leadership, the council has earned a reputation as one of the highest performing councils in the UK and one that delivers for the people of Leicestershire. The council have consistently been in the top five of the county benchmarking league table for over many years, despite being the lowest-funded county authority. John's ability to balance political complexity with operational excellence has earned him wide recognition and a high level of respect across the local government sector, Whitehall, academia and with partner agencies. John was awarded the CBE for Services to Local Government in the 2010 New Year's Honours List, recognising his outstanding service and commitment to public life. He is highly regarded by politicians and officers alike and would be greatly missed as the chief executive. Lauren Haslam. This is also the last meeting before Lauren Haslam retires. She has been director of law and governance since 2016, having first joined the council in 2000 as a solicitor in the employment team. The county council has a great deal to thank Lauren for. The council's reputation for good governance and high standards of conduct is a result of her hard work, professionalism and integrity. Her expertise has ensured that the council has operated with transparency and fairness. She has been a champion for staff wellbeing and made a key contribution to the corporate management of the council. On behalf of myself and my predecessors, chairman, I'd like to express my sincere thanks to Lauren for her sound advice on the conduct of meetings and calming presence. I'm sure members will wish to join me in wishing both John and Lauren a long and happy retirement. Well, after that, it's down to business. Agenda item number two, minutes of the meeting held on the 24th of September. I moved at the minutes of the meeting of the council held on the 24th of September 2025, copies of which have been circulated to members, be taken as read, confirmed and signed. Mr Hamilton Gray, will you second, please?
Seconded, Mr Chairman.
Thank you so much. Agenda item number two, minutes of the extraordinary meeting held on the 12th of November. I moved at the minutes of the meeting of the extraordinary meeting of the council held on the 12th of November 2025, copies of which have been circulated to members, be taken as read, confirmed and signed. Mr Hamilton Gray, would you second?
That's seconded, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. Agenda item number four, declarations of interest. I invite members who wish to do so to make declarations of interest in respect of items on the agenda for this meeting. Are there any declarations? Okay, thank you. Agenda item number five, questions asked understanding order seven, one, two and five. The questions and replies set out in the order paper were taken as read and entered into the minutes. I have received notice of supplementary questions from Mrs Taylor, Mrs Bottomley and Mr Bone. Mrs Taylor, would you like to ask your supplementary question to question D, please?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I just want to put on thanks as well. My thanks to John Sinnett and Lauren Haslam for all their support over the years. So my supplementary on question D is, I thank the lead member of his answer and his shared concerns about dangerous and obstructive parking on a road. He has mentioned that there's a finite resource and this issue causes concerns across many areas in Leicestershire, not just in my area. So could you please look at increasing this budget and employing more civil enforcement officers, please?
Thank you very much. Mrs Taylor, Mr Tilbury, would you like to respond?
Thank you, Miss Chairman, and I echo councillor Taylor's words about John and Lauren. Thank you for all your hard work over the years and since we've come into administration. And thank you councillor Taylor for your question. Look, I sympathise with your predicament because I've got a similar one in my ward with a local football club and it's, there's not a really easy way around it because it's a real fine line between balancing, encouraging the people to part well, enforcement and also essentially comes to punishment in some aspects. I think the best thing for me to do is probably arrange a visit to come and see the site first and then we can look at it together. You can give them your input on what you think you need to do and then I will do the same on my part. And I think me with Ann Cruz, we can come up with a solution for you. Thank you councillor. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Tilbury. Mrs Taylor, would you like to ask your supplementary question to question E, please?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. So my supplementary on question E, I thank the leader for his response. Given the sharp increase in complaints compared to previous years, what impact has this had on the council's resources, particularly in terms of staff costs, staff time and the costs associated with processing and investigating these complaints?
Thank you, Mrs Taylor. Mr Harrison, please.
I would like to say a few words of support and admiration for our two officers who are leaving, particularly John and Lauren. They've served well with distinction. We will be able to talk later, hopefully, for a few minutes, but I think it's just appropriate to start off with that, if I may. For comparative purposes and interest in transparency, the response includes data relating to members other than the administration between the 1st of May 25 and the 12th of November 25. Complaints received were as follows. Administration-
Excuse me, Dan, sorry, you're reading the... Mrs Taylor, would you mind asking the question again?
Let's hope leaders listening this time. So question E, I thank the leader for his response. Given the sharp increase in complaints compared to previous years, what impact has this had on the council's resources, particularly in terms of staff time and costs associated with processing and investigating these complaints?
Well, thank you for that. Obviously, you're aware of the finances and there's processes going on. We're living in a very, very tight sort of situation and period in local government. We're not the only council across the country suffering, but we are just looking at costs and expenses appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Harrison. Mrs Bottomley, would you like to ask your supplementary question to question G, please?
Thank you and thank you for the response. Since no clear or measurable evidence has been presented to show that the current arrangements are negatively affecting service quality, collaboration, staff wellbeing or organisational performance, could members please be provided with the following information? On how many occasions have members of the public attended County Hall and been unable to receive adequate support specifically because the relevant staff are working from home? How many staff have reported that working from home has negatively impacted their career progression, sense of isolation or team cohesion? The number of staff who have raised concerns about the introduction of the 50% onsite working requirement? The anticipated total cost of implementing this policy, including any refurbishment, workspace adjustments and parking or access arrangements needed to support this increased onsite attendance? And how has this data been collected or gathered? This would allow members to understand the actual evidence base and whether the proposed change is proportional and cost-effective. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Bottomley. Mr Fowler, would you like to respond?
Yes, happy to. Thank you, Mr Chairman. And I'd also like to take the opportunity whilst I'm here to thank both the officers that are departing us today. A massive amount of professionalism and competency over the years has been displayed and since we've been office in our short term, I can certainly say, particularly for John, it's been a pleasure working with you and, you know, I think your leadership has been vital for the health of this council. So, you know, I wish you well. But on to the question, thanking the actual numbers for the evidence base of productivity and things like that, of getting people back into the office. It's a difficult one because, I won't lie to you, there are contradictory reports across the private and public sector that say that some arrangements are better for people at home, some are better for in the office. We've taken it that because this is a public organisation and that the taxpayers are obviously funding people's salaries, we think it's the right move to make to get people back into the office because based on the evidence we've seen, it increases productivity and collaboration. In terms of the actual numbers itself, I don't have them to hand right now, I won't lie to you, but I'm sure that can be arranged that we can kind of give you something supplementary. I can speak to you afterwards if you like. But I do hear the concerns because at the end of the day, it is about flexibility and making sure that we've got the balance right because for some roles, it may be so that it's much easier to do things at home, but for some, especially when it's a public-facing organisation, as I said in my response, it is vital that there has to be somebody there to answer a call or answer somebody coming in and wanting to speak. So, yeah, I'm sorry, it's probably not the most concrete answer I could give you, but I'd be happy to supplement that further at a private meeting, whatever. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr Fowler. Mrs Taylor, would you like to ask your supplementary question to question H, please?
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and I thank the leader for his response. Could the leader clarify what the 72 million figure refers to as he mentioned during his BBC Radio Leicester interview on the 2nd of October 2025, when he was the Reform leader and not a member of the Conservative Party? Does this figure represent a specific budget line, a combined savings target or a hypothetical example as previously stated? Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, Mrs Taylor. Mr Harrison?
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. Probably you'll be aware, it's the figure that I submitted during an election process where I contested the deputy leadership with you and I was able to explain to members what I thought at that time. That was the beginning phase of what I was trying to do is to find efficiencies, but obviously that was unsuccessful at that time. So all I'm saying is, yes, I have tried in the past, but now I understand the sophistication and how it works. And obviously with a company like Newtons now, who's got great records both nationally and internationally, and this is the fourth time they're working with us now. So it is a different project, but I knew in those stages, we had to do something, but it was all in order. So of course the debt grew and everything else has happened and here we are today. So hopefully, from the start of this early starts with Newton, we will hopefully find where we can balance our budgets and it's going to be critical going forward because obviously we've got other areas of debt growing naturally unconstrained that the government's not even attending to and we're left with it and we're paying the interest on it as well. So it is old, it's what I meant because I believe for a long time we have to review the whole stage of how we operate the business and the efficiency of business. And I, hopefully, we will get a conclusion which will be helpful, probably not in any particular area, but helpful to the council as a body because we just couldn't carry on as we are. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Harrison. Mr Bone, would you like to ask your supplementary question to question L, please?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to the lead member for his written answer to my question. So for my supplementary, I want to ask, with so many Whittick residents, quite frankly furious about buses on the totally unsuitable route down Church Lane, can the lead member for highways confirm whether the council still has any power to stop this route or reroute the bus elsewhere? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr Bone. Mr Tilbury, would you like to respond, please?
Thank you, Miss Chairman, and thank you, Mr Bone. I confirm it's a commercial route, which means the county council will do not subsidise it at all. So it is the bus company's decision, finally. Thank you, Mr Bone, thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Tilbury. Moving on to agenda item number six, to receive position statements from members of the cabinet, I would now invite the leader to make a statement. When the leader has finished his statement, I will invite members to speak. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand and I'll then call you to speak. I will invite Mr Meyer, Mr Mulaney and Mrs Taylor as leaders of opposition to speak last before the leader's right of reply. Mr Harrison?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I start off with my head in his members' conduct. Since the May election, there's been too many examples of comments made in social media, both political, personally in nature, attacking members from both sides, resulting in complaints to the monitor officer to deal with. For my part, I apologise to all members and staff of this council. In attempt to draw a line and move on, I met with Mrs Taylor and Mr Smith, her deputy leader, on the 28th of October, along with my deputy, Mr Kevin Crook, to try and agree a new protocol dealing with how our respective groups could agree to end direct personal attacks on each other and keep political comment and discourse to policy where it should be. However, Mr Chairman, towards the end of that meeting on the 28th of October, which I thought was robust exchange of views in front of witnesses, Mr Smith threatened me with physical violence and to knock my block off if I hurt someone he cared for. Mr Crook had to intervene to calm the situation down, but naturally I was frightened for my personal safety and remained wary of him in-person meetings with Mr Smith. I've reported this matter to the police and I am not satisfied that the leadership of the Conservative group has dealt effectively with this. Mr Smith's conduct and behaviour to which he has admitted in subsequent emails of apology, I've received. I do not accept the apology and a call on their group to take whatever corrective action is necessary. Local government reorganisation. I'm delighted to report the business case for local government reorganisation has been submitted to government. I'd like to place on record my thanks to the officers produced in the final bid and to the scrutiny whose input was helped shape the strength and strengthen the case. I also welcome the strong cross-party majority in council supporting this proposal. It demonstrates our shared commitment to deliver a better outcome for residents across Leicestershire and Rutland and showing the local government remains responsive and sustainable. We'll hear from government in the next year with proposals to move ahead to the consultation stage. Building regional strategic relationships, which is absolutely critical. To my administration, we've already built and forged new relationships at every opportunity. I've written to all Leicestershire MPs to get their views on LGR and I've met with Dr Luke Evans MP and Mr Ed Argreagh MP to discuss LGR and other key issues facing the council. I've also met with the East Midlands Combined Authority Mayor, Claire Ward, to discuss LGR, the Freeport opportunities for future work and relationships together. I've also met with the temporary chief constable and the Bishop of Leicester. And also, a new innovation which I'm hoping is going to be very powerful and succeed is the villages together. I was contacted by a gentleman who organised a meeting, but he was able to bring along planning officers from two different authorities and I thought it was first class. I've since spent about 40 minutes on the phone discussing how this organisation could grow and establish its Bates roots. So I'm absolutely delighted with all of this and discussed the towns and parishes. The local planning and applications are being developed. I hope this positive dialogue will feed into LGR and our plans for area committees. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr Harrison. I would now invite members to speak. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand. Any more? Okay, we'll make a start. Mr Bray, please.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. And I just want to add my best wishes to the future to both John and Lauren for their tremendous service they've given to the people of Leicestershire. On local government reform, I'm not going to rerun the arguments that we had at the last council meeting. I clearly take a different view to the leader on the best way forward on this. I do hope that this will be yet another Labour U-turn, but that's probably, probably a wish too far. I'm meeting the MPs, well, good luck to him. I do hope he's managed to get some of them off the fence because I think we would all like to know where their position is on local government reform. But I do think that we do need to... I couldn't stand up without to pass a comment on the first item on the report. This is incredibly serious. This is, if the press this morning are to be believed with this new reform conservative coalition that Nigel Farage is planning, then this is obviously not going down very well at the start of that, is it? In fact, you know, 16 years I've been here, we've had some very robust debates across this council chamber. But I do think we need to hear from the leader of the opposition on this and the opposition groups because to threaten physical violence if this is as reported, then that's clearly, clearly very serious. And, you know, I've read in the press since May, Mrs Taylor calling for more investigations than Poirot, frankly, members on this side. So we want to know whether there is going to be an investigation. And not only that, I speak as the Liberal Democrat leader on the fire authority as well. If there is behaviour like this, then that's clearly got to leave Mr Smith's position at the fire authority in question too. So I think we do need to hear what action the Conservative group is going to take because this is obviously clearly very serious. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Bray. Before I move on to the leaders, is there anybody else? No? Okay. Mr Meyer, would you like to speak?
Cheers, thank you very much, Mr Chairman, and I want to echo all the thanks to John and Lauren for years and years of sterling work. I'm sure, you know, we all appreciate the value that they've brought to the county council. But I want to move on to the position statement and it was extraordinary reading this position statement. I, along with Stuart, have been here for a number of years and this is the first time, I'm embarrassed to say that, you know, we're embarrassing ourselves, Leicestershire County Council. This kind of thing shouldn't be aired in public. I understand the seriousness of it, Stuart said it, but it should be, you know, sorted out behind closed doors and it seems to not have been. So it's just one of those things where I think an investigation is required. And if an apology isn't accepted, then, you know, I'll leave it up to the two parties to come to an agreement what it will and will not be. I echo Stuart's thing about the representation that certain members have and if this plays out the way it is, yeah, there might be repercussions outside, but we will cross those bridges when we come to it. But the Labour group is this, there shouldn't be any threats of violence or anything between anybody. And how will that play out with our residents and how will it play out with our staff? So it's just, you know, if we're doing it amongst ourselves, they're not going to take us seriously when we say that as well. Local government reorganisation. I welcome the leader's statement that the submission has gone in. We can all agree to disagree in this chamber, but at least we've got our bid in and we'll wait for the outcome in January for the consultation and possibly the summer for, we know how the new authorities are going to go live. On the leader's meeting with all the other people that he's met with, fantastic that he's doing that. He should come and meet some of the district leaders, I believe. So hopefully the invitation will be open again in January onwards. And that, because that, you know, you talk about planning and villages and parishes and districts have a very big say in planning and delivering plans. So it would be welcome to have that input as well. And ultimately, however the government restructure is, we'll all be working towards that end game in 2028 where the new authorities will be taking over, you know, subject to the timetable staying correct. I don't want to say any more on that, but I think the first item shouldn't have been, Mr Harrison shouldn't have been in there. You should have just sorted it. But it's in there now, it's in the public domain and we'll just have to deal with the repercussions.
Thank you, Mr Meyer. And Mr Mulaney, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and if I also pass on my appreciations to John and Lauren for their years of service to the authority I mean, there were really serious issues facing this authority. We have a responsibility for incredibly important services, whether it's social care to the most vulnerable members of society, whether it's the pressures on special education needs, whether it's the poor state of many roads and pavements, many, many issues that affect the everyday lives of residents. So it's very disappointing that we got to a situation where personal disputes and threats of violence are down as the main issue for discussion and hopefully these issues can be resolved so that we can concentrate on the issues that we nearly need to concentrate on as an authority, particularly as we have heard we are having a new chief executive after over thirty years of one chief executive and obviously the uncertainty of local government reform that means that we really do need stability at the county council. In terms of local government reform, I mean, myself and my group have set out our view on this already. At this authority, I totally understand that it's a minority view, that we don't agree with one authority for Leicestershire, that we do think it will be too remote and distant from people and that it will open the door to city expansion, that when the government sees the proposal of one authority for three quarters of a million and a city of Leicester for three hundred and fifty thousand, because it is so unbalanced, it will strengthen the argument that the city mayor is putting to the government for the expansion of the city boundaries into the county, which is something that everybody doesn't want. In terms of fair funding and the discussions with MPs about LGR and so on, we'd be interested to know what the position is of all the MPs in the county. I know some have already given their views. It would be interesting, I'm sure, to constituents for all the MPs to express what their favoured position is on the future of local government reform. In terms of fair funding, I think the authority did really miss the boat on this issue during the last parliament because we did have the perfect situation where we had a Conservative majority County Council, all Conservative MPs and a Conservative government, which you would have thought would have given them enough leverage to have sorted this in our favour. Now, obviously, we don't have that situation and I suspect it will be more of a challenge to get fair funding from this government. Certainly, we need fair funding, the residents of our community deserve it and I wish the leader well in his efforts to get that, but I think there was a missed opportunity in the last parliament on that issue. But I'll simply close by saying with some really important issues, it's a very uncertain time for the authority and we must concentrate on the key things that affect the everyday lives of people in Leicestershire.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mulaney. And Mrs. Taylor, would you like to go?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I have to agree with both Mr. Meyer and Mr. Mulaney that this shouldn't have been in the leader's position statement. So I'm speaking on behalf of Mr. Smith, who is unable to respond directly today, as he's in the process of seeking legal advice regarding the leader's statement. First, I wish to make clear that I was personally present at the meeting on the 28th of October. I can confirm without hesitation that the account presented in the leader's position statement does not reflect what took place. The description of the exchange, both in content and tone, is wholly inaccurate. It also conveniently misses out the threats made to both myself and Mr. Smith in that meeting. I fully support Mr. Smith in refuting the version's events that have been put on public record today. The leader has indicated that he's reported this matter to the police. If that is correct, it is surprising that an alleged ongoing investigation has been disclosed publicly in this forum. Ordinarily, one would expect the police to advise against referencing such matters while any inquiries are said to be ongoing. For further clarity, Mr. Smith completely rejects the account set out in the leader's statement. He is prepared to provide a full and accurate description to the police, should he be asked to do so, and for the record, so will I. Finally, I advise Mr. Smith not to comment further at this stage as he can currently seek receiving legal advice in relation to the allegations made.
Thank you, Mrs. Taylor. Mr. Harrison, would I respond?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. There has been a chain of emails through, from the deputy to the leader of the Conservative group and she said originally he was dealing with it, there was understanding, recognition and everything else and then eventually, she said, the apology is now, that's complete, it's all gone. But there hadn't been an understanding. You cannot hear those words and not think, wow. You know, they were unusual words, not normal exchange of words that we might grumble at each other. It was not that. And I can honestly say, the words I said was what was spoken. So did this gentleman here. There was a gentleman, an officer who came into the room and says, oh God, you've just missed Craig Smith threatening to knock the leader's head off. Nobody was, that was said, nobody was there. So there's three people, three versions then against what was said. But the bit that gets me really is, Mr. Chairman, the arrogance of this leader who's chased us over responsibility and behaviour. There, there was a case where there was, I consider it to be really bad behaviour to threaten somebody with violence and she's done nothing. And she said he's self-correcting himself at one stage and the whole thing just runs on. Now, eventually her last comment is saying, well, he's apologised, that's the end of it. So that was her case, it's all documented. And what really makes me feel angry is, that was wrong, the behaviour. It was not right to talk to the leader of the county council like that. It was just not right to use aggressive language and he did. I wouldn't be here today standing if it wasn't. I've got more important things to do than to chase people, but there was consistency from the leader of the Conservative Party to duck and dive and not answer it. And what really sparked it up, I was speaking in loose conversation to a member of that party and I mentioned, oh gosh, I've had some trouble with, you what? Shock and amazement that those words were mentioned and nobody knew about it. Nobody knew about it in the party. So all of this has been going on with nobody really knowing. So all I'm saying is, I want fairness. If I'd had a proper apology, heartfelt, and you say, okay, we shake hands, we deal with it, but it wasn't, it's avoiding it, not wanting to talk about it and so now here we are today. So I am concerned, Mr. Chairman. I know what I heard, I know how I felt, I know what I've said to people, I know what I've said to two separate police officers and I know what the gentleman here, my deputy heard and his gesture to slow it down, whoa, he was astonished and shocked himself. So, look, where it's going to go, I don't know, but that's, we'll see where it goes. But I know that I can stand here, look anybody in the eye and say, that happened, that's what happened. We could have resolved it, but you chose not to resolve it properly, you didn't want to discuss it properly with me. And when I asked you to leave him out of meeting regarding the new financial look at things, your reaction, no, it's my deputy will be there. So I didn't attend. But I don't intend...
Dan, sorry, could you just talk to me, please?
Oh, sorry. I don't intend, Mr. Chairman, to mismeet us in the future. Unless this is resolved, how can I sit with Mr. Smith? I tried to resolve it, I wanted to resolve it, but it's just been thrown away, ignored. So here we are today and we'll wait and see where it goes, Mr. Chairman. But I'm very, very angry and disappointed that she could stand and make those statements against other witness statements who were there and I, as leader of this council, would not lie to try and do whatever. It isn't appropriate, there's no need for it, there's nodding and joking and saying all sorts, well, that's fine, she must come out. But I would say to you, Deborah Taylor, I'm calling her out, Mr. Chairman, why on earth hasn't she dealt with it when she chased me for the last six months over the slightest thing? You know, suspend them, kick them out, do all sorts. She had a problem, then she didn't deal with it and she probably didn't even talk to her members about it, I don't know, but the person I spoke to was very surprised. So there it is, Mr. Chairman, we'll wait and see where it goes from here.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Going to move on to something now, which is the Lead Member for Resources. I'd now invite the Lead Member for Resources to make a statement. When the Lead Member has finished his statement, I'll invite members to speak. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand and I'll then call you to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, everybody, fellow councillors and members of the public. I'm delighted to deliver my inaugural position statement as Lead Member of Finances and Resources at Leicestershire County Council. It's been a busy couple of months, to say the least, but I feel very confident that despite facing challenges, the department is heading in a very promising direction. Today, I'd like to briefly report on our highly anticipated efficiency review that's currently being undertaken here at County Hall. Before I was even elected as County councillor for Bruntingthorpe, it was clear that public finances were spread incredibly thinly, both on a local level and within a wider national context. That's why, in my election manifesto, my first pledge was to find efficiencies within the organisation. This was supposed to improve the long-term prosperity of the authority and get residents the best value for their hard-earned tax contributions. Of course, there are external factors that contribute to the financial difficulties that local authorities face. Unfortunately, we know this all too well here in Leicestershire, where regrettably we receive the worst funding per head out of all upper tier authorities. That aside, my team and I can only deal with the cards that we've been dealt. Therefore, the leader, myself and the rest of Cabinet decided to go out to tender for a contract with a business consultancy in order to find the necessary savings to bridge the gap. After this process, we decided to work with a reputable company called Newton. They've worked with us in the past and delivered some savings at a departmental level in children and family services and adult social care. However, what they are doing now is far more comprehensive and ambitious. I hear and understand some of the concerns that fellow members have raised about the nature of these savings and what they may mean for the people of the county. The truth is, we are still in very early stages of the review process with quite literally millions of data points needing to be reviewed, analysed and evaluated. That said, I want to assure my colleagues and members of the public that we are going about the delivery of this programme with the right balance of decisiveness and diligence. This job is for a scalpel, not a chainsaw. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you much, Mr. Fowler. I'd like to invite members to speak, if you'd like to speak, if you'd like to raise your hand. Mr. King, is that...?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Also, I'd like to wish John and Lauren all the best for their retirement or whatever they're going to do. Can't imagine they'd be sat at home doing nothing. But what I wanted to just talk about is, a few months ago, in these knacky little leaflets here, a number of promises were made by the members over here, including the party you represent as well, Chair. What Reform UK promised was support for local businesses, dozens of new community officers on the ground, no consultants and no wasteful spending, lower costs and tighter financial management, stable, serious leadership, ending six-figure senior salaries. That was specifically mentioned and yet we're later on going to be appointing our new chief executive on a six-figure salary. I'm not complaining about that, I'm just merely pointing out that the administration pledged in numerous election leaflets that went through residents of Leicestershire's door that they would stop that and clearly we're not proposing that. So what is Reform administration done so far? Well, so far, I've heard nothing about your pledge to support small businesses, the lifeblood of our economy, to reduce the rates burden on them. There's been no scheme, no support, no engagement, as far as I'm aware, from the county council towards developing any policy in that area. As far as I'm aware, there's been zero new community officers, not one recruited, but in the election manifestos, leaflets, it said dozens, dozens would be recruited to reassure our residents about community safety. Obviously, we all know about the 1.4 million that we're spending on consultants just to look at the books and that could rise to 30 million depending on performance, but as you, Mr. Harrison has mentioned, the member for finances mentioned, sorry, Mr. Harrison, just confusion there, that's actually, and looking at what Newton are going to be having to do, they're going to be having to do something they've never done before, scale that they've never achieved anywhere else. So this is an order of magnitude difference. And finally, Chair, I want to say that, you know, earlier on in the administration, we were told that Doge would be coming in by the previous incumbent, Mr. Harrison for Bruntingthorpe. That's obviously now not happening and, you know, so what I really wanted to say, Chairman, and I think what I'm trying to understand is, we've had a lot of flip-flopping from the administration. We promised one thing and then what you're doing is you're delivering completely the opposite to what you said and that's what's concerning me is, well, what can any resident actually believe in what you're actually going to do? Because you say one thing and then six weeks later, a bit like the national government, you're changing your mind and you're doing something completely different. So I'm just really trying to understand if this is now what you're going to do or whether you're going to change your mind in a few weeks' time and do something different. Thanks very much.
Thank you much, Mr. King. And Mr. Galton, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and may I add my congratulations in a way that the two senior officers are retiring and I hope they, I'm sure they will enjoy their retirement, the role they've played with the council. It's worth that we've recognised that today and I would like to join everyone who spoke before. I'm afraid I came to this quite with a lot of scepticism. I attended the briefing, I'm sorry the leader and the Lead Member weren't able to be there because I think a lot of what you've been saying today, we could have covered that. But we did have a robust discussion with those present and I'm slightly, a little bit more reassured what you're trying to do, but there are major concerns. The first is the timescale. So, you know, it's a real tall order to produce anything by the time we have to set a budget in late February that could in any way make a contribution to closing the gap on the savings in the budget this year. It seems to me that this is a much longer timescale thing and although they say they'll produce some findings and a report, we know that having ideas to start with or possible savings, that is the beginning of the process. It can take years to put those into action as through service transformation and so on, probably longer than this authority's got left or any other authority in Leicestershire has got left. So, as I say, I approached it with an open mind and we'll see what happens. I felt a little bit, a little bit, that the consultant was going to sort of borrow our watches and tell us the time because we have huge experience in this authority at officer level and at member level as well of trying, you know, we've made millions and somebody reminded us how many millions of pounds of savings we have took out the budget since 2010 and it is hundreds of millions. And that has largely been done by very hard work of the officers of this authority. So again, I'm a little bit, I think we have that expertise, but I was reassured that the challenge, you can identify the problem, the challenge is how are you then going to go on to actually deliver those savings? And perhaps the experience that Newton have got working with other authorities maybe be useful. The comment I'd make on that is, and it was made during the briefing meeting, is that a lot of authorities have not had to go through the pain that we have taken out. The low-hanging fruit has long gone, years ago gone, and the work they've done with some other councils that were mentioned was probably a lot easier than the kind of work that's going to have to be done here because there is nothing left, pretty much, other than basic statutory services. So it's an enormous challenge. I'm concerned what it will actually be able to deliver before the council have to set a budget and I think we will be well advised to take it as a much longer term piece of work, which hopefully will deliver something. Thank you, Chair.
Right, Mr. Galton. And Mr. Charlesworth, please.
Thank you, Chairman. All the best to Lauren and John for the future and thank you for your service. I won't comment on the staggering hypocrisy of Mr. King. Oh, there I have, there you go. I welcome the review. Let's see where the Newton review goes. If it does come back, and I'll be surprised if it finds major savings, but if it does come back with savings that don't negatively impact on the residents of Leicestershire, I will support it. But if the Reform administration take a dogmatic and political approach and cut services they do not agree with, then I won't support it. But I keep an open mind and we'll see what comes. Thank you.
Thank you much, Mr. Charlesworth. Is there any more questions before I move on to the leaders? No? Okay, Mr. Meyer, please. Oh, sorry, did I...? Not yet? No, it's Mr. Meyer first.
Thank you, Chairman. I read this statement and actually, when you read something, you get to the end of it and think, what's it telling me exactly? But I can understand, Mr. Fowler's new to the role and he's getting his feet under the table and I can understand that one as well. What I can't understand though is, at the election and during the election period and immediately afterwards, we were told Doge was going to come in and rip the council to shreds and find all the savings for the new administration. What I can't understand, though, is at the election and during the election period and immediately afterwards, we were told Doge was going to come in and rip the council to shreds and find all the savings for the new administration. Don't know what happened to Doge, died quite a death in Kent, I think. But we are where we are now, and we're spending 1.4 million on Newton. I went to the meeting, open meeting, I was astonished when the leader and the deputy leader gave their apologies to such an important meeting, and now I understand the reason why, but, gosh, you're in County Hall, nothing's going to happen to you in County Hall. So I suspect, hopefully, we will see you at the next meeting, because it was a very important meeting. I think the members that were there talked to the consultant with our offices and made sure that we set some, not grand rules, that would be the wrong way of saying it, but some expectations of what we wanted from the expenditure, because it's a lot of money that we, 1.4 million pounds will buy a lot of staff time to be delivering the services that we need to deliver. So what we're now going to be doing is spending that money, looking for savings instead. And as Mr. Galton says, some of those low-hanging fruits have gone, and also anything that they might recommend, one, might not be pleasant, and two, it might take years to deliver, and 2028 is just around the corner. So yes, we have open minds, but, you know, what would be the reward of that investment? What is the administration thinking? That as an outcome, that we can say that was money well spent, and that's what I'll be looking out for, and my group will be looking out for, to say, actually, the investment there, the return was there, and that's definitely something that, you know, we can be proud of. And I don't think that will be something easy for you to present to us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Meyer. Mr. Malaney, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also sort of echo the concerns that others have raised, including Mr. Galton. I don't object to having a look for potential savings, and if savings can be found without causing damage to important services for the residents of Leicestershire, then obviously we would support those savings. However, 1.4 million, possibly going to be even more, is a lot of money to be spending for somebody to have a look at savings. And when you consider that since 2010, the authority has saved about 280 million pounds, it does ask the question, how much more savings are there to be found without really cutting into the essential services that the authority provides? So we're concerned about how much the consultancy is costing. We will see what savings they suggest. If they find savings which are relatively painless, then obviously we would support them. But obviously, we wouldn't support anything that did serious damage to the services that the people of Leicestershire rely on, particularly because, as we know, this authority is the worst funded under the previous government and under this government, and it's already a struggle to fulfil some of the essential services that need to be delivered. So we will support any painless or relatively painless savings, but we wouldn't support anything that cut essential services for the residents of the county.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Malaney. Mrs. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and congratulations to Mr. Fowler, and I will get your name right, for his first position statement in the chamber. So I do thank the lead member for acknowledging how low-funded this council is. The previous administration had kept this council afloat while protecting our most vulnerable within the financial envelope we had. The previous leader, Nick Rushton, constantly said we would not be issuing a 114, and we've stuck to that under our administrations. I look forward to receiving more information in our cross-party working group to understand the efficiency review and what it might deliver for this council and for our residents. I do share Mr. Mears and Mr. Malaney's concerns that the low-hanging fruit has long gone, whereas other councils are starting the process that we started a long, long time ago. But I will keep an open mind, see what the review might deliver, but I don't think it would deliver much before we have to set a budget for next year, which concerns me greatly with the budget gap that we're still showing going forward. So I will keep an open mind, and we'll see what happens in the new year with the efficiency review. But I thank the lead member for his statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Taylor. Now invite the lead member, Mr. Fowler, to respond to the comments that have been made.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for everybody who's asked me questions. I'll try and answer them as best I can, I've been writing down frantically, so we'll see what we get with that. Mr. King, yes, about Doge, how it was mentioned, it was at a national level, that's fair. I certainly do, you said the member for Bruntingthorpe, which I believe is me, said about Doge. I didn't say anything about Doge initially, so we can go back on record for that. But when it comes to the actual Reform prescribed Doge that was said before, that's something, that's national policy. We're here to do a job at Leicestershire County Council, and first and foremost, I'm a Leicestershire County councillor and the lead member of this organisation. So what other counties may do, you know, obviously Reform centrally have had their priorities with maybe some of the more, well, we've got majorities basically, because they can get more through, you know, to be completely frank about it. So we didn't know when they were going to come, so we've taken our own initiative, and we feel that this is the best way of going about it in a professional manner, rather than things we don't know, and of timescales, we don't know when they're going to come. So that would be my question with that, my answer to that question. And yes, it is ambitious, especially with the timescale, and a few people have touched on that. We are constrained with time when it comes to the budget, I'm fully aware of that, and I'm not going to try and pull the wool over anybody's eyes. But ultimately, we've been working with Newton now for a couple of weeks, and it's still early stages, but we have confidence that they'll be able to deliver the savings. Yes, it's not going to fix a problem overnight, and yes, it is going to be a long-term thing. And Mr. Galton, I do agree with you, that it is something that is a long-term, sustainable change that we're going to have to look at. But that doesn't mean that savings can't be delivered quickly, and I am confident that from what I've seen so far, even though it's still a range, I'm happy with what we've actually seen and what they've said to us, the early indications, and I'd be happy to be able to talk more on that in the future. I would also say that, yes, we do have our own savings initiatives, and the things about low-hanging fruit, fair enough. There has already been saving initiatives within the council, we have our MTFS, and that's across departments, and that's great. Officers work really hard on that, and, you know, I couldn't thank them enough for the work they do. But it's just good to get another set of eyes on it, and to see things from a slightly different perspective externally rather than internally, and organisation-wide rather than inter-department, because it really is a separate way of looking at it. So I think there is definitely justification from there, and they've got private and public sector experience. They've worked with other local authorities, but they've worked with massive companies as well, and they've got a track record of delivering savings. You know, our process of going out to tender was thorough, we had a lot of people come in that made their cases, and we didn't think they were very promising. So, you know, we've got full confidence in Newton. I would also like to say, I'm sorry, Mr. Meyer, that you, some of the things went over your head on the speech, I'd be happy to explain those to you afterwards. But the 1.4 million consultancy fee, yes, it is money, and I understand that on paper, when we see it in black and white on a bit of newspaper, that Leicestershire County Council is spending 1.4 million, it can seem stark. But anybody who has any kind of greater understanding of economics knows that you have to spend money to be able to make money sometimes, that's just the nature of business and economics. In this, the key thing is, all of the funds that we pay them in Newton are performance-dependent, they're at stake. We're not paying them anything if they can't deliver us anything. So we've got the right contract in place, and everything is in hand with that. And I'd also like to reiterate as well, because I know this is something that is on people's minds, and I think Mr. Malaney touched on it, with the delicacy of delivering savings without cutting the services and the outcomes for people of Leicestershire, for our most vulnerable. And I completely echo the sentiment that we need to look after those most vulnerable, that's what we were elected here to do. And, Mr. Chairman, I can assure you that our efficiency review will not put at risk the care that the residents receive. As I said in my position statement, this is something that needs to be done with the right balance of doing our due diligence, but also being decisive about it and getting that timescale right. So hopefully, I've answered some of the questions there. I'd be happy to give more later on when we get further details from Newton. As I say, it's still quite early on, but yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler. I now invite the lead member for Environment and Transport to make a statement. When the lead member has finished his statement, I'll invite members to speak. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand, and I'll then call you to speak. Mr. Tilbury, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, as a lead member for Environment and Transport, I'm pleased to report that our gritting team is ready for winter. The night shift arrangements start on the 3rd of November for proportionately salting, and they've already been out gritting on seven nights this year, the first being on Monday the 17th of November. All our salt livers have been received, and the depots are stock-ready for the season. In addition, as part of the annual process, all operational procedures have been reviewed. I can go through all those reviews, but I'll pick out the ones. Twenty-five farmers across county are available to support the snow clearing across the county, and 20 parish councillors have now snow wardens appointed. Revenue budget provision for the winter service financially is 2 million, but actual expenditure will depend on severity of weather conditions. When not gritting at night, our supporting or supporting the response to flooding, the team complete urgent requests for pothole repairs, gully emptying and responding to emergency defects. The control room continually monitors weather forecasts and severe weather alerts, ensuring that operational teams repeat a check of resources on receipt any weather alert. Going back to the response for Storm Claudia, personally, I think the County Council works and offers a sterling job. They were out within hours of reports of blocked gullies and drains, and they worked 24/7 from Thursday, 13th of November, through to Monday, the 17th of November. On the Thursday night ahead of the adverse weather, teams delivered road close signs, floodboards and cones to the side of the road at known flood hospitals such as Slash Lane and the Timber Yard in Seyston. The service took over 344 from Friday through to Sunday. Twenty-two trees fell across the highway and removed, floodboards were put up at 32 other locations. Since the previous flooding in January 2025, the highways drainage team, so that's six months to the previous administration and then in two hours, emptied 5,000 gullies, 8,000 of them on the high-speed road network as part of the routinely scheduled maintenance. They carried out additional cleansing, 5,000 gullies in response to flooding in January with another 2,000 programme following Storm Claudia. Reports of two properties internally flooded in Colver and Ratby, but since then we've heard that two also in Lutterworth were internally flooded. The councils have contacted those people, Mr. Chairman, and we're offering help. I'd just like to say thank you to all the members and the flood groups I've been to visit over the last few months. It's been a cross-party thing, everyone's offering their support and knowledge really across the board, and they've really helped with their suggestions of how we can make Leicestershire more flood resilient. Our drop-in centres, we had two last week in Loughborough, and the week before brought in us before that, a tonne of people I'd be more flood resilient. And one thing that's popped up today that isn't on the order papers, I've been working with a Great Glen flood group, and we're pencilling a letter to M. Hardy on trying to secure more funding for flooding. We're going to contract all the other flooding groups throughout Leicestershire, and at the same time, we're all going to propose this letter, because as Mr. Malaney said, we are vastly underfunded. We've got serious flood issues in Leicestershire, as shown in the two January events from this year and the year before, and I would hope everyone supports me when I ask all the leaders from the opposition parties to support me in this, and all the local councillors in places like Seyston, Salby, Great Glen Harbour as well, so we try and get as much funding for Leicestershire as possible. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tilbury. Mr. O'Shea, please.
Thank you, Chair. A lot of thanks, Mr. Tilbury. You came out to Ratby when, well, you've actually come across to my area in Grooveby, perhaps not seeing the victim in Ratby, but the, I want to thank the team specifically for the work that they did, and also adults and communities, because it was a very vulnerable victim that was flooded in the village, and the response was swift. And as always, I have to say, I'm very proud of the highway teams, as the previous cabinet member for Leicestershire, they do a phenomenal job, and I just want to put that on record. And finally, I would like to thank John for his hard work, and obviously yourself, on the hard work that you have done and kept this legal department at the top of the tree. God bless you both.
Thank you, Mr. O'Shea. Mr. King, please.
Yeah, thanks, Chairman. So I'd like to thank Mr. Tilbury for his position statement, and also for coming to visit Great Glen and to see firsthand what the issues are with the flooding that's occurred there twice in the previous two years. I'd also like to thank the teams for all their work, but there's two issues they've got. One is a bone of contention, that the River Sence doesn't get mentioned on any of the media stuff that goes out, it just says the, I think the Lower Saw, Tributaries, or something like that. So it kind of, it's a bit difficult for residents and other people to know, is there a problem with the River Sence or not? So that'll be something which I think the comms people need to sort out. The second thing, which is a bit of a concern, is the issue with what we call leaf drop, in particular places like the A6 dual-carriage Great Glen bypass, which has these open swale drains, and the leaves just basically accumulate around all the drains, which when there is heavy rain, results in heavy water flow across the road, making it very dangerous for driving. So what I'm trying to understand is what is being done to coordinate the removal of these mountains of detritus that are blocking the drains with the district councils, because when I try speaking to the district council about it, they kind of then sort of say, well, it's down to the county council. So we're kind of falling between the two things, but in the meantime, road safety is being put at real risk, and I do think it's something which I hope, Mr. Tilbury, you will take up. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. King. Mr. Meyer, would you like to respond?
Cheers, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Very good report, thank you very much. Flooding is always important at this time of year, make sure we're getting ready. But it demonstrates how effective our teams are at the County Council, and I know the Reform Party probably campaigned on changing things and doing things differently, but I think the reality of when they're in administration now is that our officers are excellent and they work really well, and that's been demonstrated by the gritting team and also by the flooding team, and everything you've asked of them, they've delivered for you. So I think it was a lovely setup by our previous administration to leave them in such good stead, as they say. However, you know, it's good talking, and it's actually, it's about delivery and how you carry on that delivery. I like to focus on flooding, I think that's important, and I welcome the, was it, the vehicle at the end of Botley Lake Lane in my division last week, the two days lots of residents went, I went myself, spoke to officers, and some of the flood wardens came as well. So trying to grow that awareness and how people can help themselves, that's very good, and a very good focus as well by the administration. So thank you very much for taking that on board, and I think we should always thank the administration when they've done something really well. How are we going to carry on and deliver that with just a £2 billion budget, and how are we going to, you know, look at the issues of deep, deep flooding and structural work that needs doing in some of the areas? That's going to be the challenge, because before this meeting today, I was at a large employer in Loughborough, and all they talked to me about was the drains being blocked, the brook not emptying fast enough, and the flooding and the service flooding. So they lost a quarter of a million pounds' worth of goods in the January floods, and they said if, a couple of Fridays ago when the heavy rain came, because they're not as busy in January, but it would have been over about half a million pounds this time round if it got into their factory. So I can understand businesses and residents are very concerned, so we've got to keep the focus on there. You will get an email from me probably tomorrow of that conversation that I've had with them to see what we can help and do as well. So yeah, so, Mr. Chairman, welcome this report. But just one aside, Mr. Fowler, I do understand the report, it's just not that, it's gone over my head, because if I wanted to be spiteful or thinking, I would have said to you, you weren't even first for your role, and also your register of interest says you don't do any other job, so.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Mr. Malaney, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Floodings are an issue of real concern to many residents, it's one of the issues that we made a priority as Lib Dems at the election campaign, and I'm glad that the new administration has made it a priority as well. Speaking from the Hinkley and Bosworth perspective, certainly Withersley is an area where there has been issues of flooding in the past and is of concern, and I'm glad to see that that does get a mention in here, because it is an area where we do need to ensure that it is properly defended from flood issues. So again, yeah, we welcome the report. It is a big issue for many people in the county, and I'm glad that it's getting a priority.
Thank you, Mrs. Malaney. Mrs. Taylor, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I thank the lead member for his statement, also for the work you're doing. You certainly are a shining example of how a lead member should act. So our highways team are one of the best in the country, in my view, and they've continued to keep our residents moving during the winter and offer immediate support during floods with our emergency response teams, and also working with the LLR resilience partnership. Mr. King has already mentioned it here, but I also wanted to mention, I think it's important to ensure we're working with our borough and district colleagues to ensure they're clearing the silt and leaves off our roads, so they don't go into the gutters and into our drains. And I think that is a prime example of where LGR will exactly help us, that we will go out and clean all the leaves up, so we don't block our drains up, and that just creates more and more flooding. I've got loads of roads in my area that are just full of leaves, and I've asked them to be cleaned, and they're not, and then they just end up in the drains, and I think... be cleaned and they're not and then they just end up in the drains and I think that is a real issue that we need to be pushing our district and borough colleagues on because, you know, it's just not working as it is and we're getting more and more flooding. So I think that is something that maybe the lead member can take on board and maybe try and work a bit more with those and try and get this sorted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Taylor. Yeah, now invite Tilbury, would you like to come back?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Thank you for all the questions and comments. Yeah, firstly, thank yous to Mr O'Shea for his work that he did previously in the administration, the officers and people I spoke to, who have gone to visit, have had a little bit of praise for him and also Mr Whitford's work as well, who's my predecessor. For Mr King and also for Miss Taylor, I've actually brought this up already because I've seen it around my area, it'd be talking like that high and then just going to the drains. So this is something where I'm already actually working on and I will actually let you know what is the solution to that. Obviously, we have put the extra money in for more regular maintenance and clearing the drains and the gullies, which will help our assets, but we'll have to try and tie it with the districts and I'll try and get in touch with like the leaders there and hopefully Jewel, you'll be able to help me on that one. And Jewel, yeah, I mean, if you, we do need more money, there's major infrastructure that's needed last year. When we pen this letter to Emma Hardy, if I could have your signature and your support please, because that would really carry some weight, because it's your party in number ten. Mr Malaney, thank you for your words, yet Withley's on the list as well. And thank everyone, if you've got any concerns, if you see any blocked gullies, please report, see any blocked drains, please report it because the better we are, the better we are at stopping flooding, that's our main aim. We can't guarantee we're going to stop flooding, but the officers here did a sterling work throughout Storm Claudia and hopefully that, well, we know that work will continue. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Tilbury. I would now invite the Chairman of the Scrutiny Commission, Mrs Taylor, to make a statement. When the chairman has finished the statement, I would invite members to speak. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand and I will call you to speak. Mrs Taylor.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and I think this is one of the first position statements from the Chairman of the Scrutiny Commission, so I'm delighted to be presenting this today. So since assuming the position of Chairman of the Scrutiny Commission in May twenty twenty-five, I've sought to ensure that the council's commitment to scrutiny continues. It has always been considered here in Leicestershire to be an essential function within the council's operation, including the Cabinet to account, sharing, shaping policy and promoting transparency. Whilst it was disappointing that shortly after taking on the role of the Chairman, I and some of my other scrutiny colleagues had to seek to review a Cabinet decision regarding amendments to the council's flagline policy, the decision having been made without adequate consultation or engagement, including scrutiny. I've since been encouraged by the Cabinet's cooperation and engagement with scrutiny, in particular the leader's regular attendance at the commission. I'm optimistic that we can all work together to best support our residents, which remains our shared objectives. Over the past six to seven months, scrutiny has continued to be busy. I'm particularly pleased with the input the commission was able to provide to the council's local government reorganisation proposals and thank officers for their hard work in preparing the business case for us to review. The commission held a dedicated session to examine the business case, discussions ensured robust challenge and resulted in a number of areas of improvement being identified. I am pleased to see that these have all been taken on board by the Cabinet and I would say this is a good example of how effective scrutiny can be and how it should be used to drive improvement. The commission continues to assess the council's financial performance and all scrutiny commissions are set to rigorously review the council's budget proposals and the status of the efficiency review in the coming year. The leader has consistently stated that frontline services will be protected with minimal cost to taxpayers. While I appreciate this commitment, it remains evident that ongoing budget demands and pressures will continue to influence future outcomes. A key budgetary concern for many authorities remain the higher needs block deficit. The commission maintains oversight of this issue while the Children and Families Oviun Scrutiny Committee monitors the implementation of the council's Building Education Services Together Programme, which is designed to alleviate existing pressures. In response to members' concerns about the trajectory of growth this year, a joint scrutiny workshop was held in October by both scrutiny bodies to examine this in greater detail. This session provided valuable insight into the challenges facing the council. Scrutiny will continue to monitor the position closely and make recommendations where it can. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, Mrs Taylor. Are there any questions from members? Mr Harrison.
Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Sorry, Dan, I got, you go last as a leader. Is there any other members? No? Okay. So basically we go to Mr Meyer if that's okay.
Cheers, thank you very much. Welcome to this statement. Yes, it is the first, I think. I don't think we've had a position statement from the Chair of Scrutiny, but that's not to say that we shouldn't have it, so maybe this is, be a regular thing, so that's great. Yeah, I share some of the concerns, the Labour Group shares some of the concerns that are on here, definitely about the frontline services potentially being impacted by any budgetary or decisions made by Newton. I think if I hark back to the county council elections, all Mr Harrison was on about was we were overweighted by three hundred million pounds, the budget was for staff and that's where he'd find the savings. So if that's what he was saying previously, maybe Newton is one of the ways of delivering that, so we will have to wait and see and hopefully scrutiny will pick that up. As a Labour group, we're too small to have somebody in scrutiny, but I did welcome the opportunity invited by Mrs Taylor to sit in on the local government reorganisation consultation, scrutiny of that, so welcome. Thank you very much for that one, for allowing us there. It's, you know, it makes us all inclusive and even though the decisions we can disagree on, as long as we've had a say, we can, you know, we can't ask more than that as well. So yes, thank you very much for that report. Others may say other things about it, but yeah, I welcome the report and hopefully it's more of a regular occurrence when important issues are to be had. Thank you.
Thank you much, Mr Meyer. Mr Malaney, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. As Vice Chair of the Commission, I echo the importance of the commission's role at the moment, particularly with there being no overall control and still some serious issues regarding the finances of the council and the pressures on many of the public services that the council provides. Scrutiny has a very important role in highlighting these challenges and certainly in terms of the efficiency review, I think we will be looking very closely at what outcomes there are from that and ensuring that whatever savings are proposed doesn't have a damaging effect on the services that residents in the county rely on. Also, the special session on the local government reorganisation, I think was a very useful one in terms of going into detail on that session. Obviously, myself and colleagues were in the minority on that issue as we are at County Hall, but I think it was a useful way for us to look in depth at the various issues around local government reorganisation. So I think in the final years of this authority, there are still some very serious issues regarding the services that the authority delivers and its finances and scrutiny will play an important role in that.
Thank you much, Mr Malaney. Mr Harrison, you're on.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I've always said I wholeheartedly support scrutiny. I've sat in the hot seat many times with scrutiny, so I understand, but it's right and proper, it's fair, because if we're not democratic and we don't have a situation where nobody can be challenged, it's worthless. I believe in it, it is important and there's jobs to be done to hold different people to account and it's right and proper that we do it. I dare say I'll be spending many hours in the future in the hot seat there, but that's what this is all about. If we've got things to answer, we should be able to answer them properly and openly and fairly. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Harrison. Now invite the Chairman of the Scrutiny Commission to respond to the comments that have been made. Mrs Taylor, please.
Thank you and thank you for your comments and concerns, Mr Mayor, and also thank you for attending the L G R scrutiny meetings and for also Mrs Bottomley also attending. I'm glad you were able to come and that you found it useful, you know, even though you're, you know, a single member but a member of a very small group, I think it's important that you're involved within scrutiny. If there's anything else coming up that you may be interested in or I think you may be interested in, that invite is always there for you to come as well. Mr Malaney, you're a very experienced scrutiny member and you were the chair before me and you're a really good supporter for the commission as the Vice Chairman. I hope that that continues into next year. I think it's working really well having the two main opposition groups as the Chair and Vice Chair of that committee. I agree, the L G R scrutiny was a very good session. I thought the lead officers that came there and spoke about their services really opened everyone's eyes up about the impact of L G R, whatever way it goes. I think we're all aware now of the impact on our services from that really important scrutiny session. Mr Harrison, thank you for supporting scrutiny, coming in the hot seat. It was fun when you're sitting there for me anyway, I hope it is for you. And yeah, you're right, we should have good scrutiny this council and I hope I can continue doing that as we go forward, so thank you.
Thank you much, Mrs Taylor. Agenda item number seven, Report of the Cabinet. This is the Annual Delivery Report and Performance Compendium. I will call on Mr Fowler to move the motion on the order paper.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I present the County Council Annual Delivery Report and Performance Compendium for twenty twenty-five. I should preface this by saying it is quite long, so apologies everybody, but it is extensive and it's important. So the delivery report, which we are required to produce and publish under local authority governance guidance, highlights some of the progress against key priorities and objectives in the council's main service strategies, including those areas subject to improvement activity. The year has seen positive examples of delivery across the council's main service areas, with progress often supported by successes in bidding for additional resources from a variety of sources. Examples across some of the main service areas include major highway construction such as the M M D R Road, progressing the A five eleven major road growth corridor scheme, Zeus Bridge replacement scheme and twenty-two million pounds of maintenance and improvement, including the Market Harbour Transport Strategy. Extensive improvements to the public transport network, including new bus routes and eleven new demand responsive transport services. Forty-six new electric buses will have been introduced by July twenty twenty-six and also a variety of active travel and road safety initiatives. In relation to environment as well, launching a local nature recovery strategy and a first biodiversity duty plan, supporting the Charmwood Forest UNESCO bid, continued partnership with wildlife charity Nature Spot to boost biodiversity and progressing tree planting under the Tree for Every Person scheme. For children, families, families rather, continued provision of health visitors, the Healthy Tots Programme or a healthy eating programme, Book Start Programme and Wrigley Reader Sessions. There we go. With family support through the Household Support Fund and targeted family health services and family hubs. The Front Door Service also supported C two thousand families, circa two thousand families, with advice and signposting and teen health service delivered a variety of initiatives as well. With regard to education, a new school places strategy to twenty thirty, the county's first forest school also opened in August twenty twenty-five, together with expansion at four secondary schools, providing nine hundred and twenty-four additional school places, Mr Chairman. Bowman Academy also opened, providing additional send provision, along with a range of other send improvements, which obviously are vital. Economic skills work included securing three point two million pounds skills bootcamp funding to deliver a range of skills courses, two million pound freeport investment in the Future Energy Skills Hub and adult learning and multiply programmes. Economic work also saw support to the Enterprise Own Programme, investing in Leicestershire Fund, Freeport Inward Investments, Airfield Business Park Final Phase, investing in Leicestershire and joint place marketing arrangements, with continued support to strategic and mineral planning activity across the county. In relation to public health, securing five point two five million pounds' worth of funding to deliver health research to improve lives and tackle inequalities, work to reduce health inequalities for people with a learning disability, supporting a community-based immunisation initiative to increase uptake, a new Leicestershire Air Quality Action and Health Plan and Continued Health in All Policies approach. The Warm Home Service also delivered one point two million pounds' worth of energy efficiency measures, which come up to winter, well, in winter is very important as well. Adult social care saw improved adult mental health provision, new home care arrangements, new website with better information to help people find support, improved adult social care customer feedback arrangements, new care technology for people with early onset dementia and enhanced adult social care improvement plans. And finally, communities work has seen improved service usage and a variety of awards for our museums, cultural assets and libraries. Continued growth in the number of council volunteers and a variety of volunteer roles. Trading standards work saw a range of enforcement visits, inspections of imports at East Midlands Airport, tackling of road traders and support for vulnerable residents and the council has also implemented a new corporate customer experience strategy. Let's that done. So they're just a few examples of good delivery, this report, so it is a balanced review. The separate Performance Compendium includes a range of supporting performance and financial data, which summarizes performance over the past year as well as comparison with other local authority areas. The separate, sorry, I've read that. It includes the core spending power table, which again highlights Leicestershire as the lowest funded county, despite considerable efforts to date across multiple administrations to achieve fairer funding, with significant funding differentials from other local authorities, particularly in London and other metropolitan areas, with this making it increasingly difficult to meet service demand and relieve pressure on council tax levels. In relation to performance, benchmarking for the twenty-three, twenty-four year showed Leicestershire to be in the top five performing counties and county unitaries, despite being the lowest funded, which is a really positive thing. Looking at the twenty-four, twenty-five performance data, seventy-three indicators improved last year, some in previously lower performing areas, which is obviously again a big positive. However, the ongoing legacy of the pandemic in areas such as public health, inflation, cost of living increases and increased service demand pressures combined with low council service funding has been, continue to be felt, with fifty-three outcome areas worsening and a continued focus is being applied through service plans in the areas. That's a rather long summary of the report, but continued delivery focus is of course required, so I'm happy to move the motion on the order paper. Thanks, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Fowler. Mr Harrison, would you like to second?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. As Mr Fowler has said, the annual report summarizes progress of the council over the last year or so. Inadvertently, the report period extends over the life of the previous council administration as well as the early months of our new reform administration. I'm pleased to see that the report is already picking up the differences that a new administration has made, including stronger focus on high-quality public services, achieving efficiencies to close the budget gap and the value of money for council taxpayers, tackling the efforts of flooding, reviewing the trading services, a most cost-effective plan for local government reorganisation and new staff working arrangements. This is just the start, we're more to change over the coming months. It is disappointing to see that Leicester is still right at the bottom of the County Funding League table. We will continue to lobby hard for a better deal for Leicestershire through effective implementation of the government's fairer funding proposals. The performance data in the report will also feed into an assessment made in our current top to bottom efficiency review, which will also be considering the delivery priorities, the improvement areas moving forward. Though it is pleasing to see the fifth in the County Performance League table, which provides a good platform for future transformation, it's pleasing to see the effective transition that's taken place over the last few months to the newer street administration, highlighted in the report as well as some of the wider good work and services delivered by the council. It is just a start, but we're already starting to see the difference. We have made and we're determined to close the budget gap whilst continuing to ensure high-quality services are delivered to Leicester residents. Thank you for the report and I understand it well and received the scrutiny commission and I'm happy to settle the motion on the order paper. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Harrison. Now open up the item for debate. Would anybody, Mr Innis, please.
Thank you, Chair, and I wish John and Lauren all the best as well. Delivery is one thing and I'm glad to see the performance of the council in delivering new projects and continuing to support residents. I think one thing, and I just want to say, follow up on what Mrs Taylor has said, the role of scrutiny is to point out where perhaps we're not doing so well and one of the areas that we, that has been highlighted many times in different scrutiny committees is access to the council itself, actually being able to contact people, contact the right people. And I think, as I say, delivery is one thing, but we need to make sure that our residents have adequate access to all the services and know how to contact us when they need to. Thank you, Chair.
Mr Innis. Mrs Gray, please.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chair, and I'd like to thank officers for a very comprehensive and detailed report. The delivery report in the public transport section refers to the provision of new bus routes, which I was delighted to see in my division in Loughborough, specifically around the Grange Park Estate and areas of Shelthorpe. However, I don't want this just to look good on paper and I am aware of ongoing issues of consistency and reliability with the service. I know that this now lies with the commercial operator, but I'm raising this to make the lead member aware in the hope that the county council will be looking to work with the operator to ensure that these really, really welcome new services actually deliver truly sustainable transport options for local residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gray. Any other speakers? I'd just like to ask, Mrs. Taylor, sorry.
Thank you. This did come to the scrutiny commission and it was well scrutinised there and I just really want to put on record my thanks to all of the council and all of the staff and all of our office there that deliver all these services day in, day out. And I think by reading the report, you can see how much they actually do in the breadth of the work that this council does in supporting all our residents and businesses, what far wider across the whole of Leicestershire. Yeah, I just wanted to put on record my thanks to everyone for their support.
Thank you, Mrs. Taylor. Mr. Mayor, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to say that the book and report shows how much we do as a county council and the delivery of the things. There are challenges, obviously. But, yeah, I echo the thanks to all our staff who actually go out on day-to-day, deliver everything that we ask of them and the professionalism that they show. I really welcome the extra visitors to the libraries and the museums. It's been one of those things where I was on the committee when we looked to outsource them, not outsource them, that's the wrong word, partially, given to the community and keep some in-house as well. And that's flourished and that's done really well. And we've kept them and invested and put some technology in so people can go out at various hours. So, that is welcome to see that trend going. But the challenges remain, you know, adult social care, we know what's happened. We want to make sure we deliver on that. We know we're overspending on children's services as well. So, you know, it's just not all rosy then on finances. However, I just wanted to pick up, it's been mentioned several times today that we're facing challenges of funding and it's called underfunding now, which is fine. But I hate to say it, but I think the government are going to give Leicestershire County Council finally some more money and I think Pixel had it at 6.9%. It might not be that high, you know, we know that was the consultation. It might be a little bit lower, but any extra money is welcome from the Labour Government. That's great. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if there are anybody else before I go, could I just invite Mr. Fowler to come back? Sorry, Mr. Malaney, I didn't see you.
Thank you. It was just to, obviously, add my congratulations to those who put together the report, which does outline much of the work that is done by the authority. I would also add, of course, that it is just a continuing frustration that as this authority is the worst-funded county under the last Conservative government and still continues to be underfunded under this government, it can't deliver the amount and quality of services that really is needed across the county. And so, we do still see with roads and pavements that need repair, whether it's the pressure on social care and special education needs. There's still things that could be done if we were fairly funded by government. So, I congratulate the work of everybody who has delivered, or they have delivered, given the difficult financial situations. And I do just repeat the message really that it is time for governments to start fairly funding Leicestershire so residents can have the quality of services that they deserve like everyone else.
Thank you, Mr. Malaney. If that's the end of those questions, should I come back, Mr. Fowler, please? To respond to any of those points?
No, no, I've got nothing else to add to that.
We will now take a vote on the matter. Can all in favour of the motion moved by Mr. Fowler please raise their hands? I think that's unanimous, but I'll just check. Anybody against the motion? Please raise their hands, just in case we missed it. Nope. Okay, that's unanimous. So, the motion is passed. Okay, we can move on to agenda item number eight, Report of the Constitution Committee. I'll call on Mr. Harrison to move the motion on the order paper. Mr. Harrison.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman, these changes to the constitution have been made to clarify our current process and to make the rules easier to read. I would remind members that the changes to Part 4A of the constitution, the meeting procedure rules, will not come into effect until the next council meeting in February, where we will vote again on motion two. I move the motion on the order paper, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Mrs. Taylor, would you second the motion, please?
I'll second the motion on the order paper and reserve my right to speak. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Taylor. We will now open up the item for debate. Would anybody like to raise a question or make a speech or something? Nope. Okay. Okay. Would you like to respond, Mrs. Taylor?
No, nothing further. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much. Okay, we will now take a vote on the matter. Can all in favour of the motion moved by Mr. Harrison please raise their hands? That's unanimous. Thank you so much. So, the motion is passed. Thank you so much. Okay, agenda item number nine, Report of the Appointment Committee. I'll call on Mr. Harris, the going to move, let's do it, to move the motion on the order paper, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm delighted to move this motion to appoint Jane as Chief Executive. She has an excellent track record, strong leadership skills and has led our Children's and Family Services to their outstanding rating by Ofsted. I'm looking forward to working more closely with her. I would also like to take this opportunity to personally thank John. This is for his exceptional leadership and dedication to Leicestershire, as well as professionalism, helping the new administration to find its feet. Hope all members will support. I'd like to also add my most serious thanks to you, John. You were kind enough to extend what you were going to retire and I asked you and you were willing to do so and I'm just so grateful for that time, John. With what we were going through, LGR, it was massive. And I just have thanked you personally many times, but I mean it really sincerely. And it would also like to thank all the officers who have involved in that massive document. I've said it many times, but when you look at it and understand the work that's gone in, it's incredible. But you led that team, John. Thank you very much indeed.
Thank you. Mr. Harrison, Mrs. Taylor, would you second the motion?
I'll be very happy to second the motion. I'll reserve my right to speak, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much. I now open up the item for debate. Would anybody like to speak? Mr. Charlesworth.
Thank you, Chair. Let me say from the outset, I'm more than happy for Jay Moore to take the role of the new chief exec. And forgive my ignorance, but I do have a couple of questions. The first one's fairly simple. How many people were on the shortlist? And the second one is under the background under item three. I mean, I understand it was an external process as well, yet it says there has a legal duty to appoint one of its officers. The local authority to appoint one of its officers. I didn't quite understand that. If it's been an external operation as well, so if somebody could answer that, I'm happy to support the motion.
Just checking for you.
That's just a reflection of the standing orders, which are in standard form. It's a requirement from the government when they introduced the executive procedure rules that there's something incorporated in there about the appointment of a chief executive having to be made through the council and it's obviously of one of the council's offices. It doesn't suggest that it's an internal appointment only. It's an external or internal appointment, but it's from one of the officers within the council who is to be appointed.
Thank you. It just wasn't very clear to me, that's all.
Mr. Harrison, thank you.
I think there was something, sorry, somebody.
Sorry, Mr. Harrison.
It was just a correction to explain.
Sorry, it's Mrs. Taylor first. Okay, you can do that in your right to reply. You can do that in your right to reply.
Oh, right. He was just answering that because he had a dilemma and I had the answer. Okay.
Right, okay. We've just gone a little bit out of order there. So, Mr. Malaney, please.
Just going to add my congratulations to Jane on her appointment. I'm sure she will make a first-class chief executive for the authority. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, please.
Yes, thank you very much. And I will echo that as well. Congratulations, Jane. On behalf of the Labour Group.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Poland, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Just, I was on the appointments committee and I can tell you from experience, it was incredibly robust process with some outstanding candidates and Jane was really, really, really solid all the way through and I'm delighted that she's accepted that job and subject to the vote that she'll be our next chief exec.
Thank you, Mr. Poland. Mr. Pugsley, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to begin by recognising the contribution of our outgoing chief executive, John Sinnett. Although I've not been here for the majority of the time that you've served, it didn't take me much time at all to appreciate the steadiness, professionalism and dedication that you've brought to the role and to this authority. Your commitment to Leicestershire has been evident in every interaction I've had and I want to take this opportunity to thank you and to wish you a well-deserved time. Turning to today's decision, I want to speak from my own direct experience of working with Jane Moore. As Director of Children and Family Services, Jane and I have worked very closely on some of the most sensitive and challenging areas of the council's work. Time and again, I've seen her approach complex situations with clarity and calm judgement. What stood out most to me is Jane's integrity. She's open, honest and completely focused on doing the right thing for families and for the county. She has an instinctive ability to unite people, to bring clarity where there is pressure and to keep sight of what is truly important. I've much valued her advice, her professionalism and her steadiness. In every conversation I've had with Jane, I've been struck by her commitment to serving Leicestershire. Colleagues, from my first-hand experience, I know that Jane has the leadership, the character and the judgement to take on this role and to do it exceptionally well. I commend her to the chamber today and hope that you will join me in supporting her appointment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pugsley. And Mrs. Taylor, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to start it again for thanking John for his long service to this council. I think he is still the longest-serving chief exec in the country. So, I'm really pleased that he chose Leicestershire to serve his term there. And just personally, when I first joined the cabinet and then as deputy leader and then through the difficult time of acting leader when Mr. Rushan had to step back for medical treatment, he's been a very loyal, strong chief exec for me. So, thank you for that. Just want to give thanks for the appointment committee as well. I thoroughly enjoyed working through it. It's hard work and it was a lot of work, but I thought it was a really robust, as Jane has said, I think it was really good. And, yeah, I think the team that handled it, the HR team and the legal team that handled the whole appointment and obviously democratic services to organising the time as well was great and it ran very smoothly. And I think we've had comments from all the people that were part of it to thank us for the way it was run. And then on to congratulating Jane. Obviously, I know Jane really, really well. We've worked together for seven years, two years as cabinet support member and five years as the lead member for children's services. Jane started as the director for children's services at the same time I became the lead member. So, we kind of grew up together, I think, to be honest and really challenged, but also supported each other through finding our way through that. And our proudest moment, I think, together is leading our children and family services to outstanding. So, that's something that I hold very dear to my heart. I know Jane does as well. So, she will be a brilliant chief exec for this authority. And, you know, I was very sad not to be working with Jane after the electoral elections, but now I have that opportunity to work closely with her again as the opposition leader. So, I'm very much looking forward to that in the new year and I'm sure we can take this council from strength to strength, building on the great work that John has done. So, thank you to John. Congratulations to Jane and we look forward to being a strong council going forward. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Taylor. Mr. Harrison, would you like to respond to any of the points that have been raised?
Yes, indeed. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think there was about a dozen plus people applied, probably more, it was probably 16-ish in the list. We eventually got it down to five, then one withdrew. So, we then went through the process with the four. And as Deborah Taylor has outlined and other colleagues who were on the committee, it was absolutely first class. It was very vigorous. It certainly was. It wasn't sort of one interview. There was various interviews with different bodies, entities within our organisation. We had various people from chief constable and other people of note and as well as officers looking over and asking. It was really very, very significant. And I think I'd like to thank my colleagues who were on that committee. We all worked hard. But I believe at the end of the day, we've got a superb candidate and I'm just delighted that we all vote and support for her because we've got somebody who might not have the same size shoes as John, but I'm pretty certain she can fit into that chair and do the job. And that's what's really all important. But just thank you to all my colleagues for their time and effort. We had two good, solid days at this. It was a full time. You know, there was a lot of effort in the meetings before going through the planning process. I'd like to also extend my thanks to the officers involved in how they're organising that. There was a lot of work going into it. So, it was just a great team effort, but well done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. We will now take a vote on the matter. Can all in favour of the motion moved by Mr. Harrison please raise their hands? Unanimous, I believe. Thank you so much. I was going to ask if there's anyone against, but I think I'll skip that, I think. Okay, we're going to go for another item. We will be taking a break, I think, probably sometime after the next one, just to give everyone a bit of a stretch your legs. So, we're just going to go straight on to agenda item number 10, Notices of Motion, Support to Family Carers. Mr. Harrison, I invite you to move the motion, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I go into my speech, I'd just like to say I think how vital this organisation is and how important it is within our communities. And I think it's right and proper that we as an organisation respect and understand all those people who volunteer to help elderly people. And some of them are not young people, but they still do this vital role. And I think it's important, if we can get this sort of activity across Leicestershire and it grows and supports, it's going to be magnificent. Mr. Chairman, carers play a vital role in supporting vulnerable people across Leicestershire. They often balance caring responsibilities with work, family and their own wellbeing. Many face challenges in accessing services and opportunities and it's our responsibility to address this. The scale of unpaid care is significant. Across England and Wales, 5 million people provide unpaid care, including thousands here in Leicestershire. Nationally, the economic value of unpaid carers is estimated at £184 billion a year, almost equivalent to the NHS budget. Around 1.7 million people provide 54, 50 or more hours of care each week, often at great personal cost. Caring impacts employment. 600 people every day leave work to care and over 2.6 million have given up work entirely. Health suffers too. 74% of carers report stress, anxiety and 42% 74% of carers report stress, anxiety and 42% of their physical health has worsened because of caring responsibilities. These figures show they are just helping individuals holding up their health and social care system, yet too often they face barriers instead of support. Through this motion, we will commit to recognise carers as a group requiring specific consideration and support. Involve carers in design and decision-making. Review service delivery to remove barriers. Assess the impact of future policies and decisions on carers. Embedding these commitments into the refreshed Leicestershire and Leicestershire and Rotherham care strategy and relevant policies. This is about fairness, responsibility, taking these steps to ensure carers are supported and valued. Let us make these commitments today and deliver real change for those giving so much to their community. I move the motion on the order paper, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Mr. Crook, will you second the motion, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I welcome these changes for carers who give so much with little or no reward. Giving them the support they deserve and access to benefits they often don't even realise are available to them will be a welcomed enhancement to their lives. At a recent event for unpaid carers, it was made clear to Mr. Abbott that they do it out of love and not for reward. Giving carers more support is the right way to encourage more people to consider the important role of caring. I am therefore very happy to second this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crook. And Mr. Malaney, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm happy to support this motion, as are the rest of the Liberal Democrat group. Family carers do amazing work looking after vulnerable family members. They save the taxpayer billions of pounds through their work, and carers are often the forgotten millions. The work they do is often not given the acknowledgement it really should be given. So, I'm glad that in this motion today, we are acknowledging the incredible work they do. I know that my own party leader, Ed Davy, has taken his own lived experience as a carer for his mother and for his son, and it's meant that he's made this a major priority for the Liberal Democrats in terms of supporting carers and highlighting the fact that often the incredible work that's done isn't given the acknowledgement and support that it needs. So, I support the motion, obviously hope that where we do have equality, diversity and inclusion policies, that wherever possible, we can ensure that carers are mentioned as a group in there and supported as a group for the incredible work that they do for many vulnerable people in Leicestershire.
Thank you so much, Mr. Malaney. Mr. King, please.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I'm very pleased to support this motion. First of all, I'm a carer myself and previously served as Vice Chairman and Trustee of the former Leicester and Leicestershire Rotherham Carers Centre, which unfortunately isn't now in operation. So, I know just how vital unpaid carers are and how often they feel overlooked. Now, here in Leicestershire, the last census in 2021 showed there were over 61,000 unpaid carers. That's an extraordinary contribution, and without them, our adult social care services just couldn't cope. Many carers unexpectedly are of working age. It's not a well-known fact. They're not, you know, they are older carers, but many, many carers are of working age. They still have to hold down a job or they need to hold down a job in order to support their families and also they've also got to take on the caring responsibilities. The recent CQC assessment of Leicestershire Adult Social Care Services made this point clearly. It found that while some support for carers works well, too many face real barriers, difficulty in finding reliable information, there's delays in getting assessments or support and inconsistent communication between teams. And obviously, these issues place additional strain on people who by the very nature are already under immense strain, both personally and also quite often financial strain as well, and they're carrying a huge emotional and practical load. So, if we want to help prevent crises and support independence and reduce pressure on the care system, then taking care seriously isn't an option, it's something we have to do, we need to do it, we must do it. And so, therefore, as I said, we've got to improve identification, clearer pathways, have more consistency of support, stronger partnership working across LLR. That's another thing that many reports have shown, it isn't as good as it could be. And carers deserve recognition, respect and a system that helps them continue caring safely without sacrificing their own wellbeing. And so, I do welcome this motion. It's a positive and necessary step, and I am pleased to support it. But I also want to understand, and maybe the leader can explain, how is this, you know, this new thing actually be monitored and how are we going to be reporting back on a regular basis to councillors? So, we actually know that it is actually making a difference and it is improving the lot of carers who unfortunately very, far too often are essentially unsung heroes, and without them, they and their families couldn't cope. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Mrs. Taylor, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the Conservative Group will be supporting this motion. This motion reflects our strong commitment to valuing carers as essential partners in health and social care. By formally recognising their contribution and embedding their needs into policy and service design, we aim to remove barriers, improve access to support and promote the wellbeing of carers and those they care for. I have a particular interest in young carers who are often difficult to identify because they see themselves as simply helping their parents rather than as carers. During my time as Lead Member for this area, I met many young carers and witnessed how remarkable they are. We must ensure they receive the support they need. We will be supporting this motion, and I look forward to the new 2026 Carer Strategy, currently out for consultation, which will strengthen the council's commitment to carers who face discrimination and disadvantage every day. We need to make sure that this is embedded in all our policies and is not just lip service. I hope scrutiny will continue to monitor this and report back to the council on how this work is going. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mrs. Taylor. Just a quick point, members of the public are not allowed to speak. It's great to see wanting to be involved, but it's only members that can speak. If there's no other questions from members or statements, then I'd like to go back to Mr. Harrison, please, for any comments from the comments raised.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of the relevant ones was Mr. King talking about how it's going to be all run, et cetera, et cetera. I presume, I met the initial group of a few of them who were really at the hub of this. They're the people who are doing things, but there's obviously hundreds and hundreds of people around Leicestershire doing all sorts. But this was the group that inspired me, and I met them in the hostings and they said, would you support that? And I said, well, yes, my wife's been ill, I have vascular dementia, I'm a carer, I understand the stresses and strains of all of this, it's easy for me to pick this up and work with it. And so, we have. It's not been a quick fix, it's took some time to actually get to this point, but I am delighted, and I think we will obviously evolve the structure going forward now and how we're going to involve the masses of people from this small hub who can evolve and develop across Leicestershire. That's the great ambition now. So, I'm confident that we've got something now, if you agree with this today, that will add tremendous value and help to lots of people who are doing it. We've mentioned, we've mentioned all of you saying, there's people, I'm a carer, look round, somebody else is a carer, we've got parents or wives or family, and don't forget, there's young people as well, carers, but there's also young people in their twenties or thirties suddenly become ill and they need support. This is a wide thing, this isn't just a tiny little sector. This thing's all across and we're walking around and seeing this every day, but we don't really see it, but today we are and we're focusing on it. So, I'm glad to hear all of the support. It's a great inspiration because this is a real, this isn't politics, it's about roll our sleeves up, let's do some work and start helping people in a group that we know we can help, that will develop across the whole of Leicestershire. And in the coming years, we'll be talking how proud we are of this, but it started here today with your support. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. We will now take a vote on the motion. Can all in favour of the motion moved by Mr. Harrison please raise their hands? Is there anyone? Anybody against? No, unanimous, this motion carried. We're going to go for a 15-minute break, and you'll come back by 20 past, please. We're going to go for a fifteen minute break and you'll come back by twenty past please. Can you take your seats please? Okay, well, thank you so much. I hope you're all refreshed. Just a quick notice before, sorry, Mr Harrison is.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Could I ask that all members don't rush out because there's an unveiling of something outside when we finish our meeting? So that's all I'm saying.
Oh yeah.
Oh yeah, 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 yeah.
I had that written down here, you stole my line. No, it's fine, it's fine, it's fine, no, it's fine. Okay, on we go. So this is an interesting one, opposing Labour's digital ID scheme. So, Mr Mulaney, I invite you to move the motion.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I brought this motion today because I've spoke to numerous residents who are extremely concerned about Keir Starmer and the Labour Government's plans for compulsory digital ID. It's something that's worrying many local residents and rightly so. A digital ID scheme will be intrusive, costly and very likely ineffective. The government says it's about modernisation, but the truth is, this scheme could cost billions of pounds. Money that instead could go on fixing the things people actually care about. Problems like delivering for the NHS, getting more police on our streets, funding schools properly, repairing crumbling roads and pavements, sorting out fair funding for Leicestershire. Forcing everyone to carry a digital ID isn't just expensive, it's an invasion of privacy, a waste of taxpayers' money and completely out of touch with what communities such as ours need. And most importantly, it won't work. This scheme will not stop the criminal gangs bringing people into the UK illegally. That's why we're standing against compulsory digital ID. The history of these types of major government databases is that they often go wrong and the costs of these schemes keep spiralling upwards. It's something that risks also excluding further those who are already technology excluded. Many pensioners, people with disabilities, people on low incomes. Not everyone has access to digital technology. That's why today, I hope we can support this motion that says no to the government's proposed digital ID scheme.
Thank you, Mr Mulaney. Mr Fowler, would you like to second please?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'd also like to thank my colleague, Mr Mulaney, for proposing this motion on such a poignant matter. What the Labour Government is threatening to do by introducing digital ID is nothing short of totalitarianism. Mandating this as a condition for being in employment fundamentally contradicts British values of liberty and personal sovereignty. It effectively holds the hardworking people of this country at gunpoint. Either lie down and accept it or suffer the consequences. And what justification is Keir Starmer's government trying to fool the public with, Mr Chairman? A baseless claim about controlling immigration. Despite not being able to keep track of the 50,000 new illegal migrants landing on the beaches of the South Coast within his tenure, the Prime Minister wants us to believe that an arbitrary digital card will somehow be able to be imposed upon them. This scheme would have no effect on the people that it claims to be aimed at. Illegal immigrants who slip through the chasms in our borders don't work for FTSE 100 companies. They aren't on PAYE or pension schemes. They overwhelmingly work for cash in hand jobs through previously settled associates or rely on the gig economy, which is virtually a separate entity. The truth is, the Prime Minister knows all this. Digital ID isn't about curtailing illegal immigration, that's merely a distraction. Its true premise is far more sinister. In reality, this is a continuation of the government's crusade against the civil liberties of the people of this great nation. All you have to do is look at their track record of suppressing free speech. It's a very slippery slope. This government is no stranger to going back on their promises, as we saw from the Chancellor last week. On digital ID, the pattern continues. In July of last year, Labour categorically ruled out the idea of their introduction, only to betray this promise less than 12 months later. The message is clear. This government's word cannot be trusted and accepting digital IDs for employment sets a precedent that will undoubtedly be used to justify future subversions of our freedoms. It starts as a condition of employment, then it's restriction of movement, then it's spending and before you know it, we are rivaling the Chinese Communist Party's social credit system. This is a dark path that we do not want to go down. I'm sure I speak for all members here today when I say that I treasure this nation's proud record of being the bastion of personal liberty, privacy and independence. Freedom in this country has always rested upon one core principle. The state serves the people, not the other way around. The introduction of digital identification tears that agreement to shreds. We all represent different political colours in this chamber. What should unite us all though is our desire to protect this country's commitment to fairness, agency and individualism. It is for that reason that I trust my colleagues all that I trust my colleagues all around the room to support this motion, of which I am honoured to second.
Thank you, Mr Fowler. Okay, I'm going to open this up for debate. Mr Poland, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and thank you very much to Mr Mulaney for bringing this motion forward. I have deep concerns about government-mandated ID cards, which outside wartime are completely foreign to our culture of limited government interference in the lives of the people. In Britain, the government serves the people, and it will be a deeply concerning day when the British people are required to show their papers, virtual or otherwise, to go about their daily lives. The recent proposed digital ID plan would require every resident to obtain a government-controlled identity in order to access public services. This risks alienating millions, not just those like myself who are a matter-of-principle object to ID cards, but also to those who are not digitally or less digitally engaged, who are often the most vulnerable members of our society. Beyond practical barriers, the civil liberties concerns are profound. A centralised IT system gives the state unprecedented insight into the private lives of citizens. It risks, as has been said, mission creep, today used for one purpose, tomorrow another. Once created, the infrastructure of surveillance is almost impossible to dismantle. This is a key reason I believe the government should limit the information it collects and not expand without a clear necessity or justification. And then, of course, there's the cost. We have seen time and again the vast national IT projects that prioritise the earth and deliver little. Billions of pounds of taxpayers' money poured into a system with no proven benefit. Money that would be better spent on things that really actually matter to our country, like investing in our armed forces that protect this country and our allies at an incredibly dangerous time in the world, properly funding local government, and, dare I say, investing in our justice system where the government are again determined to undermine the historic rights of the British people by limiting access to jury trials. We should never forget the last time Labour attempted to impose ID cards. It was a Conservative-led government that scrapped the scheme, not only because it was expensive and unworkable, but because it was the wrong thing to do. Today, we face the same proposal, dressed in digital clothing, and the same principle must again guide us. I will therefore be supporting the motion today.
Mr Poland, Mr Squires, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I will also start by thanking John and Lauren for their service. I will say that Lauren has done more than anybody since perhaps Miss Marple to uphold the code of conduct. It can be challenging for newer politicians, but it's very important work. We should keep at it, and we thank you very much for your service. I'm pleased to support this motion against introducing digital ID. At first glance, it might seem harmless, maybe even helpful. We're told it's all about making life easier, more secure, cutting red tape, making things easier for people. But, Mr Chairman, the truth is quite different. Behind all of the talk of modernisation lies something that should worry us all. Digital ID is not just about convenience. It would create a national database holding everybody's personal details. This could include financial information, medical data, personal identity and even travel records. That gives far too much power to governments and large corporations to monitor ordinary working people. And I'm not saying all of this would happen immediately, but once we open that door, future governments could easily extend the system. They'll say it's for crime prevention, tax enforcement or to stop illegal work, but it's ordinary, law-abiding citizens, people, everyday working people, who will be most affected by this. Criminals will still find ways to dodge the system. It's rather like going after a fly with a bazooka. And we've had this debate before. When identity cards were last proposed, people across all parties rejected them. They agreed that government should serve the people, not monitor them. This is a longstanding British principle and one we must protect for ourselves and for future generations. Once introduced, this type of system tends to expand. First it's for public services, then banking, then travel, then work. What starts as voluntary soon becomes something you can't live without. And what about people who can't afford the newest phone, who can't use one or don't want one? They'll be left behind, the same people that Labour promised to protect. Our freedoms are not problems to solve, they are our most valuable inheritance. Yes, we should protect people from fraud and improve online safety, but we can do that without turning Britain into a database communist nation. The job of government is to protect liberty, not trade it away for convenience. Digital ID might sound modern, but it's a step backwards from the values of freedom. I fully support this motion and I urge every member, no matter their political affiliation, to stand up for privacy, for freedom and for the great British belief that our lives belong to us, not the state. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Squires. Mr Meagland, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'm delighted at the motion presented by councillor Mulaney and will be supporting it wholeheartedly in due course. I feel obliged to speak today because the Labour Government's proposal for mandatory ID requirements is not just unnecessary, it is heavy-handed, poorly thought out and frankly typical of a government that seems far more interested in controlling the public rather than serving them. I may be relatively new to this chamber, but I believe that here in Leicestershire, we know better. We understand our communities and we know that residents in our county don't need more paperwork, more hoops to jump through or more interference from Whitehall. What they need is a government that trusts them, not one that treats members of the public as if they are the problem. Labour claims this is about security, but they produce no credible evidence to date of a widespread issue that justifies this level of intrusion. Instead, they are pushing a policy which will create barriers for the very people who keep our country running: time-stretched business owners, those in rural areas and those who simply do not have the means to navigate the layers of new bureaucracy. This is classic Labour in my view, centralised, bureaucratic and blind to the realities of rural England. They talk about fairness but push policies that make life harder for decent, law-abiding people. They talk about empowerment but introduce measures that strip away trust and impose state oversight where it simply isn't needed. I sincerely hope that Leicestershire will not stand quietly while the Labour Government imposes yet another layer of pointless regulation on our residents. And so I ask this council to oppose the introduction of dystopian ID requirements and to defend the rights and autonomy of our Leicestershire communities. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Meagland. Ms Gray, please.
Thank you, Chair. I understand the concerns being expressed around the use of digital ID. However, I do think it's important that we just clarify a few points. What the government are proposing here is not mandatory digital ID to access public services. Digital ID would only be mandatory for the right to work, tackling the growing problem of illegal working. The government have also been clear that where someone is unable to use a smartphone, physical alternatives to digital ID would be acceptable. You know, times are changing. We can look at other European countries such as Estonia, which have successfully introduced digital ID schemes, reducing unnecessary bureaucracy and streamlining access to services for their citizens. It's easy, I think, to have a knee-jerk reaction to the introduction of digital ID, but may be important to reflect on the opportunities it could present with the appropriate checks and balances and security measures that the government are proposing.
Thank you, Ms Gray. Mr Tilbury, please.
Thank you, Miss Chairman, and thank you to councillor Mulaney for proposing this motion. Thank you, Ms Gray, for your response. I think you truly believe that. The worrying thing that I would say is, I listened to the morning on a news show where a junior Labour minister actually said the following. He says, "Immigration isn't the only reason digital ID is coming out, but we didn't want to boil the water of the public with what it's really capable of." And that's what he said, live on TV. And we know what that is, it's restriction of travel and movement. If you have gone to two or three flights a year, they won't let you fly again. It's all in 2030 agenda, it's there. You won't be able to eat steak more than twice a week or two or three times a week. This is all coming, it's all going to be part of the Chinese social credit score. And I would urge everyone to accept the motion that Mr Mulaney has proposed, because this is definitely a attack on civil liberties. Thank you, Miss Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Tilbury. Mr Smith, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I know it's a late day, can I echo colleagues' comments about John and Lauren? Thank you for your service and please do enjoy your retirement, you've both earned it. Mr Chairman, I support this motion because Labour's digital ID plan is not some harmless modernisation. It's a huge step in the wrong direction and one that carries with it risks most people haven't even been told about, as Mr Tilbury has just alluded. This isn't just another app or another signing system, it's a mandatory digital ID for every single resident, tied into everyday public services, a system that effectively says, "If you don't use our technology, you don't get access." Now, let's be honest, this will hit exactly the people who really struggle the most: older residents, people on lower incomes, families without the latest devices and rural communities where broadband still drops every time somebody boils the kettle. These people will be left behind, pushed out or even criminalised simply because they're not digitally fluent. But this isn't the biggest inconvenience here today, that's security. A single national digital ID database would become one of the biggest and most valuable targets in the country, not for fun, not for mischief, but for serious state-sponsored cyber-terrorism. We're not dealing with small-time hackers, we're dealing with hostile nation-states such as Russia, China, Iran, North Korea. These countries pour billions of pounds into cyber-warfare each year. They specialise in hitting exactly this kind of centralised system. And let's not pretend they don't already have their claws into British politics. Only recently, a senior reform official was convicted and sent to jail in a case involving passing sensitive information to Russian contacts for money. That should be a wake-up call for everybody in this room. Foreign infiltration isn't a rumour, it's real, it's active and it's happening here and now. So, imagine for one moment Labour create a single gateway containing everyone's personal details, service histories, identity markers and potentially even biometric data, all in one place. And if that gets hacked, and let's face it, it's a matter of when, not if, the consequences would be catastrophic. And while all this is going on, what does digital ID actually fix? Does it put more police on our streets? No. Does it sort out roads or pavements? No. Does it help schools, councils or the NHS? Not even slightly. And what does it do to stop illegal immigrants crossing the Channel, having already thrown their paper IDs into the sea? It does nothing. It's an expensive distraction at a time when people need a government to focus on the basics, not reinvent Tony Blair's state-controlled vision as a shiny IT mega-project, that we all know will inevitably run over budget and under-deliver. And my final point is this: British people value their freedom and their privacy. We don't want to live in a country where the government backs every interaction through a digital pass, that's not who we are. Chair, this motion is the right response. It recognises the risks, it recognises the intrusion and it recognises that our residents do not want or need this level of government overreach. We should oppose the scheme, make our opposition clear to this government and work with local groups to protect residents from any future mandatory digital requirements that could disadvantage them. Colleagues, I urge you to support Mr Mulaney's motion and stand up for privacy, security and some much-needed common sense. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Smith. Mrs Taylor, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and thank you to Mr Mulaney for bringing this motion. Mandatory digital ID schemes pose serious risks to privacy, civil liberties and social inclusion. Requiring every resident to obtain a digital ID to access essential services would disproportionately harm older people, those on low incomes and anyone without reliable digital access. Many people are excluded simply because they cannot afford devices or the rising cost of internet access. This proposal is an expensive and unnecessary measure that would divert millions of pounds away from the real priorities our country and this council faces. Communities deserve investment in services that improve lives, not a costly IT project that undermines trust and fairness. This is the start of the slippery slope and it won't stop illegal working, as illegal workers work for cash in hand, not by using ID to register to work. By opposing this scheme, we stand up for British values of liberty, privacy and equality. I will be supporting this motion.
Mrs Taylor. Mr Grimley, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I agree completely with the attacks on civil liberties and the civil liberties concerns over the digital ID. But just going back, and I do remember the last time the Labour Government tried to bring in national databases, and the costs just completely spiralled out of control. And they had to be halted because the costs were just so massively high. So I think, yes, civil liberties concerns are high on the agenda, but also the record Labour have on these things is really appalling. And yeah, we've got money that we can spend, you know, things we spend the money on a lot better, like, you know, a bit more funding for Leicestershire and that sort of thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Grimley. Mr Crook, please.
Thank you, Chair. We have a full agenda, so I don't want to repeat comments already raised. I agree with all the objections already heard, but I would like to reiterate the concerns regarding the future risks of such a tyrannical policy. For example, going to a pub for a pint, but being denied service as your alcohol quota has been reached; trying to buy steak for dinner, but you've reached your red meat limit; wanting to buy a train ticket, but you've been placed on a travel ban for a tweet our government doesn't approve of. These are all theoretical scenarios, and there was a time I would be called a conspiracy theorist for even suggesting them. But in today's world, these measures are more than plausible. As a proud Englishman, I already feel our freedoms have been eroded too far and digital ID is a huge step forward on a dangerously slippery slope. I want to thank Mr Mulaney for bringing forward such an important topic and I support this motion wholeheartedly. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr Crook. Mr King, please.
Thank you, Chairman. The late Ronald Reagan said that freedom is never more than one generation away from extinction, and I think, Chairman, he's absolutely right. This, if the government goes ahead with us, it will remove our freedom of choice, our right to choose whether we wish to have digital ID or not. Many of us already have many forms of ID, some of it digital, some of it paper, some of it plastic cards. We have a multiple universe of identities. It's not a knee-jerk reaction. Security, others have mentioned, no system, we've seen that repeatedly, no IT system, no database across the world is secure enough to stop the hackers, to stop state-sponsored hacking. Checks and balances, what are they? They don't work anyway in quite a lot of the systems we have already. To me, this is a, this would be a limit, and as we've seen in the last couple of days, the government's announced yesterday, the, the, the Lord Chancellor announced the abolition of trial by jury, a right enshrined in Magna Carta since 1215 by King John for certain criminal offences over a potential sentencing. That's an absolute, you know, blatant erosion of our civil liberties and, you know, citizens' rights that have been acquired over hundreds of years, and this is just another one of them. So I support the motion and absolutely opposed to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr King. Mr Harrison, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'd like to thank Michael, I think it's fantastic, who told me two or three weeks ago, and I thought, brilliant, because this is the sort of talk we need to be having and the sort of decisions we ought to be making. And I think, I hope that not many people, only two probably, vote for this. I hope everybody else declines to vote for such an outrageous thing. This is about control, that's all it is, it's only about control. They want to control us and what they want to do is give us this, and that's it. You know, we've got our own cards, we've got our own banks, but he slipped out the word, "we can't even do banking on it", never heard that again. That's dropped straight away. This card is about control, nothing else. You've heard of airports or whatever, you turn up, said, "no", you've had your quota of flights or ate food, you've had your quota of food, it goes on and goes on. But remember, please remember, particularly the two there, we fought two world wars for freedom, for freedom. We've had freedom for hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of years. We talk of the trial, going forward and taking away the jury. And historians said, "No, you're wrong, Dan, we had a jury style 300 years before the king". king, it was the King John who wanted to get rid of those sort of trials. There's history there, we've out there, we've done it. But how can anybody sensibly think, why do you want somebody to control you with this? We use them for convenience, to probably pay bills, or a driving licence, or whatever licence you want. But that's fine, because if that's the thing, and you show you've got your proof, you're on your way. There's no control over it like this. This will control your lives. This is communism, this is what they do, they control people. So what is this card about? To make life easier? How could it make life easier for us? If it's going to restrict us, if we're going to be controlled by this card, how is our life freer? It isn't. We're being controlled by this card, and I say no to this. Don't support this, it's absolutely outrageous. I believe in coins and still notes in your wallet, why not? We should be free, we're a nation, we fought for freedom, we believe in freedom. We've got to really think, why do they want to do it? It comes back to one thing, and there's been some brilliant speeches afternoon, this is about control. If you vote for this, you're voting to give away your rights, that's all it is. They'll dress it up and dress it up, but why do they want all this information on one card? Just one person, ID, they've got everything. And they talk about it being a help. Well, if I get this card, can I go to the top of the queue for the hospital? What power does it give me? What advantage does it give me? And you know what the answer is? Zero. It's nothing. And I hope we consider it nothing and vote against this. Thank you, Mr Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Harrison. Mr Meyer, please.
Cheers, thank you very much, Mr Chairman. Yeah, what can I say? What can I say indeed? I think a lot of scaremongering going on here. Let's have a look, you know, it's just one of those where the Labour Government has made a decision that actually digital ID might be the way forward of simplifying things for employers, so if anybody goes to ask for employment, the employer can say, let's check that you're entitled to work in the UK. Let's be honest, I wonder which is the party that's been harking on? I've listened respectfully, everybody, please be respectful when somebody else with a differing view speaks as well. So let's be honest, the Labour Government said it's going to be free, you know, so the government have said it's going to be free, the government have said it's only going to be used for people when they're looking for employment or work, and it's not compulsory if you're not looking for work. So everybody who's going on about pensioners and all the rest of it, I think we had this same discussion with debit cards back in the days. With debit cards back in the days, everybody's worried how people will cope. My mum is 75 and has a debit card, probably has a credit card as well, who knows, but she's using it actively, she's got used to it, she's got her mobile phone, a banking app on her phone, uses that quite confidently as well. So let's not put down our residents as well. But also, you must be thinking that we must be the only first country to do digital ID, and you're scaring everybody. But actually, a lot of European countries, and Australia as well, they've got digital ID as well. And I don't see those countries falling off a cliff, or I haven't seen those countries falling off a cliff. And a lot of our European colleagues who do have digital ID are quite baffled, actually. So when I was hiring people for work, they were baffled that they had to bring pieces of paper in with a code, then I had to go to the website, put in the code, and then see if they were entitled to work, whereas on their phone they had their national digital ID that they could use in their particular country to prove that they had the right to work. So actually, in essence, we're catching up to what a lot of the world is already doing. And there's been lots of speculation about Chinese communism and this and that and the other, and a takeover. Let's be honest, you know, the only takeover has been by Russians of the Reform Party that we're aware of. So, you know, when you're talking about takeovers, look at yourselves first before anything else. And then finally, my point, and I waffled a little bit, but, you know, so my final point is that, you know, don't scaremonger people, don't think that people have got anything to worry about, and this might happen, that might happen, the other might happen. The government have said this digital ID will go in by the end of this Parliament, and it'll only be useful one other choice. After that point, there'll be a general election anyway, so the public itself can make a decision of whether it's working or not. And ultimately, just look at the evidence elsewhere in the world where it's worked really, really well. Please do point out, in one country where it hasn't worked really well, that has China hacked into it, or has Russia hacked into it, for example, and use those examples, but none of you have until I've raised that point. So, yeah, so please don't shoot the messengers, it's a government thing, and ultimately, it's a democratic thing, because the Labour Government, believe it or not, got democratically elected, and they're delivering on something that they think is a priority for our country. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Meyer. Mr Balls, please.
Thank you very much, Chair, and I'd like to thank the original motion that Mr Mulaney put before us, because we have gone somewhat out of scope maybe from what the original intention of the motion was, and I want to thank Mr Meir as well, because regardless whether I agree or not, and I don't, I'll be backing the motion, I think it's important to root us in what this motion was really about, and that is about, for me, the cost implication of this, at a time when we are scraping together money for every single essential service, from our level at County Hall to government in London. Also, I'd like to also acknowledge the digital divide, and the groups of people this will affect most. And we have an aging population, so more people will be working, and I think there will be inevitably people who are caught up in this divide, who miss out on being able to access this and work, and maybe the associated service, so I'm fully behind this motion. I do want to point out the irony of some of the comments to the right today, because we have a recent example of when ID has been introduced, in the form of voter ID, and the cost of that was £180 million, that's what the Electoral Reform Party Society said. And also, that thousands of voters have missed out on voting, their right to vote got taken away from them because of the introduction of voter ID. So I hope you fought as hard for that one as you are today, because I do think there's an irony in them supporting this one when they were more than happy with voter ID. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr Balls. Mr Piper, please.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I would like to obviously repeat all the comments and accolades about our two retirees, and wish Miss Moore here a successful, you've got big shoes to fill. As some of my comrades, sorry, some of my colleagues have already said, there is, there are problems here. One of the problems that I think that Miss Gray, councillor Gray missed, that my colleague here mentioned, was what it does today and what it will do tomorrow. It's called mission creep. We've seen mission creep with Stonewall, we've seen mission creep with the ECHR, we've seen mission creep with the World Health Organisation. The mission creep, and I think, was it not councillor King that mentioned, your liberty is only one generation away? Or your lack of freedom? I forget which words, was it councillor King and councillor Poland? Well, they're both accrediting each other, but whichever. When you're talking about, as councillor Balls did, about the cost and the successiveness of the potential successfulness of a project like this, I refer you to the possibility of the attempt to computerise NHS records. It cost the government an absolute fortune and failed. The same company, apparently that company then sued the government for breach of contract or something, the same company were responsible for Horizon. And what has been kept fairly quiet from the press is the predecessor to Horizon was Capture, and it too was faulty before they started installing it. So not only is it a big expense, but actually the practicalities of it. Councillor Meir talked about other countries, and he said, you name me one country where it's failed, India. Big failure, but we'll brush over that one. The other thing is, if you're talking about this and the mission creep which I'm talking about, consider what happened to the Canadian truck drivers during the pandemic. They had their bank accounts frozen by the government. I forget who now, forgive me, talked about hacking and the possibility of it being hacked. That's true, that's a big possibility. The other thing is, and one of the things that we're likely to do before long, is grey-out, where we don't have enough power to power the electricity, and we lose electricity, power cuts. And the big problem with power cuts, not only is it going to be things like digital IDs, it's also going to be a cashless society. So I would support cash as well. Now, councillor Meir also mentioned about, how do you know when you're employing people, what country they come from? Well, one of the ways you can do it, and the way most employers do it, is from a passport. Yes, this is actually a passport. And we all, nearly all of us, carry around a driving licence, you know, two great forms of ID that don't rely on electricity and are not likely to be subject to hacking. I support this vehemently, and I trust that you all will. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr Piper. Mr Bray, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chairman. I do want to pick up on a couple of points that Mr Meir said, and Mr Meir, here and I usually get on quite well, but I'm afraid I do fundamentally disagree with you on this one. And there's two things that you said that troubled me really. Firstly, that this was free. Well, okay, yes, you might not be charged to have one, but nothing in this world is free, so we're paying for it through taxes, and the opportunity of what, the cost of what those taxes could be spent on, you know, even in this county, more flood defences, more buses, more road repairs, you know, NHS, all the other services that we, I would argue, is far more important than bringing in this digital ID scheme. Now, the other thing he said, and I'm sort of scratching my mind back to my A-level politics here, when he talked about the government being democratically elected, I will very happily buy you a beer, Jules, and we'll have a conversation about mandate and manifesto and things like that, and we'll have these debates, because for a government to be legitimate, it has to have been in their manifesto. Now, I don't know whether digital ID cards was in the manifesto, it certainly wasn't talked about during the general election campaign, it wasn't the equivalent of what you put on the red bus, the vote for Labour, you get a digital ID card. So I suspect even if it was in the manifesto, but it's probably in the same section of the manifesto as local government reform and scrapping district councils, or the same section of the manifesto as winter fuel, taking off winter fuel payments, or the same section of the manifesto of freezing income tax thresholds, all of which were not in the manifesto. So, please don't just use the argument, oh, well, we're democratically elected, because this was not put before the people, and therefore there is no mandate to do it. Now, a lot in my party and a lot of other people have a big civil liberties argument about this, I have to confess, I'm less bothered about that, but I just think it will just not work. Are we really suggesting that these criminal gangs, these masterminds who smuggle people into this country, across the Channel and through other innovative ways, are not going to be able to find a way to get round a digital ID card? You know, they've evaded security across continents, they've outwitted several Home Secretaries in two different governments, but all of a sudden, a digital ID card is going to stop them. I just think it's fragrant for the birds, so therefore I will be voting for Mr Mulaney's motion too. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Bray. Any other questions? Will we ask Mr Mulaney? Okay, Mr Mulaney, would you like to come back on any of those points?
Thank you. I was just saying, obviously, it has provoked a very wide debate, which is good, and I congratulate everybody who has spoken in this debate. It is a serious issue at a time when finances are under huge pressure and there are many priorities. I think it is not a priority to bring in a very expensive identity card system, and also I do think it is an infringement on individual freedom and potentially quite a serious one. So thank you to everyone who's spoken in the debate today, and I will call a vote. Recorded vote, one.
Okay, we're now going to take a vote on the motion, and I'll hand over to Lauren.
Thank you. As five members have stood up, we will take a recorded vote, so I'm going to read out your names in alphabetical order. Please confirm whether you want to vote for or against the motion moved by Mr Mulaney and seconded by Mr Fowler. Mr Abbott.
Four.
Mr Bailey.
Four.
Dr Bloxham.
Four.
Mr Bohm.
Four.
Mr Balls.
Four.
Mrs Bottomley.
Four.
Mr Bradshaw.
Four.
Mr Bray.
Four.
Mrs Broadley. Mrs Butler.
Four.
Mr Chapman.
Four.
Mr Charlesworth.
Abstained.
Mr Cook.
Four.
Mr Crook.
Four.
Mrs Danks.
Four.
Mr Durany.
Four.
Mr England.
Four.
Mr Fowler.
Four.
Mr Galton.
Four.
Mr Gamble. Mr Gray, sorry, Mrs Gray.
Yes.
Mr Grimley.
Four.
Mr Hamilton Gray.
Four.
Mr Dan Harrison.
Four.
Mr Paul Harrison.
Four.
Dr Hill.
Four.
Mr Holt.
Four.
Thank you. Mr Inez.
Four.
Mr King.
Four.
Mrs Knight.
Four.
Mr Lovegrove.
Four.
Mr McDonald.
Four.
Mr Milan.
Four.
Mr Meir.
Four.
Mr Morris.
Four.
Mr Mulaney.
Four.
Mr O'Shea.
Four.
Mr Orson. Mr Page.
Four.
Mrs Page.
Four.
Mrs Pendlebury.
Four.
Mr Piper.
Four.
Mr Poland.
Four.
Mr Pugsley.
Four.
Mr Rikiki.
Four.
Mr Robinson.
Four.
Mr Ruddkin.
Four.
Mrs Seton.
Four.
Mr Smith.
Four.
Mr Squires.
Four.
Mrs Taylor.
Four.
Mr Thorpe. Mr Tilbury.
Four.
Mr Walker.
Four.
And Mr Whitford.
Four.
Thank you.
Okay, it's 47 for, two against, so the motion is carried. Thank you. On to urgent action on SEND funding. Mrs Taylor, I invite you to move the motion, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, I move the motion on the order paper, urgent action on SEND funding. So I rise today to speak on an issue that cannot wait, special educational needs and disabilities. Across Leicestershire, the number of children, young people with SEND is increasing rapidly. These are children who need Taylor's support to thrive, yet the resources available to meet their needs have not kept pace. The deficit is projected to rise to £110 million by the end of this financial year. That figure is eye-watering. Last year, the end-of-year deficit was £64 million, built up over the past seven years or so. So it is currently increased by just under 60% in one year. Schools, families, and local authorities are under immense strain. Teachers are doing their best with limited budgets, parents are fighting for the support their childrens are entitled to, and councils are struggling to meet their statutory obligations under the Children and Families Act 2014. The truth is simple, current funding levels are insufficient. Every child deserves access to high-quality education regardless of their needs, but underfunding SEND services risks long-term harm, not just to education, but to children's development, wellbeing, and life chances. If we fail to act now, we fail an entire generation. This motion is about fairness and responsibility. It calls on the Secretary of State for Education to urgently review and uplift SEND funding allocations for Leicestershire County Council. We need a funding system that reflects reality, a system that gives local authorities the resources to deliver the support these children deserve. Chairman, this is not about politics, it is about doing what is right. Our children cannot wait. Their future depend on us standing together and demanding the investment they need. I urge members to support this motion and send a clear message: Leicestershire will not accept underfunding that puts our most vulnerable children at risk.
Thank you, Mrs Taylor. Mr Smith, would you like to second?
Thank you, Mr Chairman, I'm happy to second, I'll reserve my right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr Pugsley.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Leicestershire County Council is committed to ensuring that every child and young person receives the education and support they need to thrive. However, the demand for special educational needs and disabilities provision in our county has grown significantly in recent years. This increase reflects both rising levels of need and improved identification, yet national funding has not kept pace with these changes. Schools and local authorities are under immense pressure to meet complex needs with limited resources. Current funding allocations fall- with limited resources. Current funding allocations fall short of what is required to fulfil statutory duties under the Children and Families Act 2014, which is why we have a growing high-needs budget deficit. This gap places strain on mainstream schools, specialist settings, and support services, risking delays in provision and inequitable access to education. Underfunding SEND services does not only affect educational outcomes, it has a long-term implication for children's wellbeing, development, and life chances. Without adequate investment, we risk creating systemic barriers that disadvantage some of the most vulnerable learners in our communities. I therefore support calls on the Secretary of State for Education to urgently review and uplift SEND funding allocations. Adequate resourcing is essential to ensure that local authorities deliver high-quality, inclusive education and can continue to meet their statutory obligations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Pugsley. Mr Balls, please.
Thank you very much. I fully support this motion. I think it's timely, considering we're heading into budget season. This is a real problem, and one I've seen firsthand at the privilege, actually, to be on the Children and Families scrutiny and see firsthand some of the data that's come through there and some of the reality. On top of that, I was a governor as well in my local school and saw firsthand there the challenges of SEND and the increase in demand. I think in most schools now, it's creeping up to thirty per cent of students in lots of schools. That's a huge demand. And there's a range of challenges that poses. I think this motion addresses the key and the fundamental issue, and that's lack of funding, and that's why I fully support it. More funding, for me, would rebalance the disproportionate need we have and reliance on independent provision. We can invest more in our maintained schools and make sure they are fully supported to accommodate more children at a more cost-effective way for this council. Also, it's those schools that often know those children best. They are best placed, they've often grown with them, they've seen them through from nursery all the way through. So they know those children best. And by relying on independent schools, we are increasing the cost and also taking away those children from friends. On top of that as well, by increasing that provision and making sure there's more places available, parents and families can know where their children are going to go. They can go to their local schools in their local communities and have that support network around them. I fully support this motion. It's much needed, and I'm delighted the work at scrutiny that's been done, the Children and Families scrutiny is being pulled through to this forum, and we can have this discussion. So I thank you for bringing this, and commend the work of the officers trying to make this work amongst difficult, challenging circumstances.
Thank you, Mr Balls. Miss Bottomley, please.
Thank you. As someone with a professional background in CAMHS, SEND schools, and children's homes, I have seen firsthand the life-changing impact that timely, properly funded support can have for children with special educational needs and disabilities. I've also seen the consequences of when that support is delayed or unavailable. Across all these settings, staff work tirelessly, but even the most dedicated professionals cannot overcome the systemic pressures created by chronic underfunding. Families are waiting too long for assessments, schools are struggling to meet the needs within stretched budgets, and children are reaching crisis point that could have been prevented with earlier intervention. Investing in SEND is not optional, it is essential. It is a moral obligation as well as a financial one. Every pound spent on early, appropriate support saves many more later in crisis services, exclusions, and long-term care. I strongly support the call for increased sustainable funding for SEND. Our children deserve better, and our services cannot continue to carry this burden without the resources required to meet it. For these reasons, I will wholeheartedly be supporting this motion, and I encourage others to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Bottomley. Mr Squires, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Whilst I'm pleased that from 2028, the Department for Education will take over responsibility for SEND funding, this still leaves Leicestershire County Council with over a hundred million pounds of off-balance-sheet debt, which will continue to rise until 2028. The number of children with SEND needs is increasing, yet support for these services has often been difficult to access for some of our most vulnerable children and their parents. As corporate parents, it's our responsibility to ensure children receive timely assessments and support. Every child deserves the best life that they can live. Chronic underfunding in SEND services risks crushing life chances, harming wellbeing, and letting down families who already struggle. And I will say, let's not forget the mass protests outside this county hall in 2022, when delays and inaction became intolerable. That was a failure of duty under the previous administration. Whilst I note that councillor Taylor has criticised our eight million pound overspend, we have significantly cut EHCP wait times, we've increased support, we've applied innovation in AI to referrals, we've increased parental support, and ensured we do our very best for every child. That is an overspend which I am proud to put my name towards. Our efficiency review is progressing well, and we're on course. And I will say, when we came here seven months ago saying that we would create efficiency whilst protecting services, all of the Tories laughed at us. And I have to say, they're not laughing now, because this administration will always protect vital services. I back this motion wholeheartedly. It is entirely right for this council to write to the Secretary of State for Education demanding an immediate review of SEND funding allocations for Leicestershire. The children, the parents, the schools, and the future of our county, it demands no less.
Thank you, Mr Squires. Ms Gray, please.
Thank you, Chair. I couldn't agree more with this motion and the urgent need to ensure that adequate resources are available to meet the growing demand for vital SEND services. That's also why I welcome the government's commitment to extending the statutory override and the announcement that from twenty-eight, twenty-nine, the government budget will shoulder SEND costs. This is a clear acknowledgement that the government understands both the vital importance of SEND provision and the crippling and unsustainable costs being borne by local authorities. I also look forward to the government's white paper on reforms to SEND provision to ensure it's able to meet the needs of children, young people, and their families going forward.
Thank you, Ms Gray. Mr O'Shea, please.
Thank you, Chair. As a governor of over thirty years' experience, I've worked with children with SEND difficulties. And I have to say that the teachers that we have across this county put so much work in, both in the dedicated SEND schools and in mainstream schools. But they need the resources to actually fulfil those children's rights, and they are those children's rights that we all have when we all went to mainstream schools. So I fully support this motion, and I thank councillor Taylor for bringing the motion, and hopefully the government will listen to our motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr O'Shea. Mr Galton, please.
Yes, Chairman, thank you very much. There's no doubt that this is one of the, if not the, most pressing issue facing this council and many other councils. And at first, I thought, well, events have been taken over since this motion because of the announcement. But having heard further about it, it's not been said how this is actually going to be funded. In other words, is it coming off the education budget? So is it actually going to affect all the other services and schools and so on? The answer partially seems to be given by Bridget Philipsen is, well, it will come out the next government spending review. But I'm not really convinced that this is going to be fully funded. And what the cause that it doesn't address is the deficit that Mr Squires has spoken about. That's still sitting there off the books, isn't it? And nobody has yet said what's going to happen to that when the government takes over the funding. There was, of course, going to be, I'm not sure it was a white paper, but there's certainly been a review going on, and that was expected to be published, I think, last month. That is not going to happen now until the new year. And again, listening to parents and carers, there's real concern about whether the outcome of that review could remove the right to an ECHP, the statutory process. There is real concern that parents' ability to get services and their entitlements could be watered down or even removed. So this is a huge, huge issue going forward, and the motion is timely. I'm happy to support it. I guess my only regret, my only regret, is Mrs Taylor could have brought this motion last year, the year before, the year before that, when she was on that side, and maybe in a better position to try and influence the previous government as well as this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Galton. Mr Meyer, please.
Cheers. Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. To be fair, I think the Labour government have grasped the need for SEND reform and funding of it, and also given a solution. The worry was that all the off-book debt would cripple councils, but actually, they said they're going to take it off, SEND, and put it in the DFE, and they'll fund it, and how they fund it. And we can be critical of that or not when we see the outcome of the review, and then we can point at it. But it's definitely a boon for this council that from twenty-twenty-eight onwards, we don't have to worry about that legacy as well. Actually, the motion, I agree with Miss Galton, this motion should have come to this council two or three years ago, because it isn't a new thing. I think the Labour government inherited a SEND provision that was on its knees. We, well, I've had numerous emails from residents where I've passed on to now our new chief executive, our previous director, to say EHCPs weren't being done in a timely manner, and can we have a look at it, and people were waiting. That's, you know, probably still the case for some people. But it's the system that's broken, or was broken, and I think the government are looking at it with a fresh pair of eyes. And in the white paper, we will see what the outcome of that is. Yes, it might please some people, it might displease other people, but we will wait for the outcome nonetheless. What is crucial, though, is to make sure that whatever is provided meets the needs of our young people, and that's the most important thing as well. And also on funding, I think the Labour government has listened. Last year, they gave Leicestershire County Council more money, then they got the previous year, and this year, we're looking at more money as well, probably five or six per cent more. I'm sure Mr Fowler will tell us when the settlement is done and it goes to Cabinet, and then it comes to us in February, how much extra are we getting? So that's a positive. Government is looking at it. We are going to support this motion because we think it's very important. But actually, the cause and the reason for SEND failing isn't down to underfunding or chronic underfunding by this Labour government or by the Labour government at all. I think it's something that they've inherited, and they need to work on it, and that's what they're doing, and I welcome that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Meyer. Mr Harrison, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I think there's been some marvellous speeches this afternoon, and really heartfelt. I'd like to thank councillor Taylor for bringing this forward, this initiative, it's first class. I am genuinely concerned about money, really genuine concern. We're paying the interest, so the taxpayers paying the interest on this. Now, I'm not certain what government will do, whether they'll offer to refund interest to us, are they going to take half of that away, but we're still left with it and we're funding it? You know, it is the unknown. We're literally in the dark with all of this. With the pressures on government, who knows what they're going to come back with? You know, to feel that they'd take it half. I mean, I can remember, months ago, I said we were told it would be all of it, it could be half of it, it could be none of it. And at the moment, it's none at the moment, we're just paying the interest as it grows. So if it's going to hit by the end of the year over a hundred and ten million or more, what do you think it's going to do next year? It won't vanish, will it? It will keep escalating. We've got real serious problems on how we're managing it. On top of all the other bills that you have to pay, we have to pay the interest on this. And I don't say, well, you pay it when you like. We've got to pay interest. It's part of an agreement, a regulation we have to comply with. So we are in desperate trouble, and I'm concerned, really concerned. The money is growing, there's all the other, everything we touch has either got massive debt we're picking up, or it's growing alarmingly. And this is one of those that are causing real tough decisions, how we're going to carry on with it. So I truly welcome this, Deborah. It's a good initiative. I'm just not sure who's going to answer it and be bothered about it, because government seems totally impervious. But it's right, if we don't knock on the door and try, and I think we need to be then talking to probably all the members of parliament, maybe get initiatives to look at how we can talk about SEND to them, and how important it is to Leicestershire, because it's just massive growth. And don't forget, the budgets are growing elsewhere, social services is growing all the time. And don't forget, what we did this afternoon was amazing, on agreeing to help carers, first council in the country to do it. But I believe if this evolves and develops, it will help us as a business as well offset some of the big hits that we're taking. So I hope this is successful. I think we're going to have to do more and bang more doors to make a noise, because nobody seems bothered. But remember, they'll have every other county in the country doing the same, saying, hey, well, we've got problems. I think all local governments got problems. I'm personally worried about Leicestershire, and I can see it's growing exponentially, how are we going to deal with it? And it'd be just that number we're dealing each year, how many hundreds of thousands we're paying in interest, will be growing into a million, a million, half, two million. Well, you know, this is real debt we're worrying about that we're left to deal with. Not now, but it's been left there for anybody to pick up, but not them. So I am concerned, Mr Chairman, and I'm grateful again for this. I'm grateful for all the members' knowledge and interest, because it's astounding listening to people's views. But we all care, and it's how we can actually achieve this. But anyway, thank you very much for all of your hard work and for the initiative of the motion. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Harrison. Mr King, please.
Yeah, thanks, Chairman. I'm not going to repeat what everyone's said, but I think Mr Galton really summed up a lot of what I was going to say, which is essentially, we don't really know what the government is going to do about the SEND deficit after twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Until then, we've got the statutory override, which, so that means we've got to, you know, basically just deal with it as it is. But it's not clear after that what's going to happen. The government says it's going to take it into departmental funding, but then that could lead to all sorts of unintended consequences, and the government might decide to squeeze that departmental funding even further than it already is. So that's no panacea. The problem, real problem, is that we will have an accumulated deficit, as Mr Harrison's just pointed out. Current year, it's, I think, a hundred and ten million. It's probably going to be nearer to a hundred and fifty million in two years, three years' time. Where's the money for that coming from? Is the government going to write it off? Or have we got to find the money? If we had to find the money, we'd be bankrupt. Whatever authority is existing in that sphere at the time, it will effectively be bankrupt. So there, you know, whilst we want more funding, and I support the motion, we do need more funding for SEND services in Leicestershire, along with all of our other local services, which, when we were in control of the administration, we constantly asked our MPs and ministers for that, but unfortunately, they and the Treasury ignored us, for whatever reasons is best known to themselves. So we're now in the position where it's another party that's in charge, so we have to go through the whole gauntlet of things again. So I think we've got to do this, and I support it, but there are pitfalls in the future, not least the fact that if it has to be funded from existing school budgets, the OBR has predicted a four-point-nine per cent decrease in mainstream school spending per pupil if that was to be funded from those budgets. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr King. Mr Smith, you reserve your comments.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Firstly, I'm very pleased to support this motion. I'd also like to thank colleagues of All Stripes for the supportive words regarding it as well. Now, we all know that in Leicestershire, SEND isn't an abstract policy area. It's real families, real children, and real schools doing their absolute best under impossible pressure. And let's be honest with ourselves, the system is starting to crumble before our eyes, not because of any lack of will or experience of our outstanding Children and Families Department, but because the funding simply isn't there to match the scale and complexity of the need. Every year, the number of children with complex needs increases. Every year, our schools stretch themselves thinner. And every year, the funding we receive simply does not keep pace with the statutory responsibilities placed upon us. Leicestershire has always been one of the lowest-funded councils in the country, and nowhere is that injustice felt more sharply than in SEND. Parents shouldn't have to fight the system, parents shouldn't have to subside, sorry, schools shouldn't have to subside SEND provision out of their own core budget. And councils shouldn't be forced into impossible decisions where Whitehall hasn't updated the funding formula written for a very different era. We're talking about children who deserve a fair start, not a place in a classroom, but support that allows them to thrive. When we underfund SEND, we don't just save money, we simply push the cost further down the line, in health, in social care, and in lost opportunities, and in families pushed to breaking point. So this motion isn't about politics, it's about basic fairness. We cannot deliver what the law requires unless government gives us the resources to do so. And the truth is simple, Leicestershire is being short-changed, and our children are paying the price.
paying the price. By passing this motion, we send a united message that enough is enough. The Secretary of State must review the funding formula, uplift the funding, and give councils like ours the means to meet the needs of every child. Colleagues, it's time the system matched our ambition for our young people, and I'm proud to second this motion.
Thank you, Mr Smith. Mrs Taylor, would you like to use your right hand?
Thank you, thank you for everyone's comments. Mr Pugsley, thank you for your support. I know you are beginning to understand the complex system of SEND that we're operating in. Mr Balls, you're absolutely right, it's just a lack of funding, but it's also a broken system, the whole system, you know, no matter how much funding you throw at it, it is a broken system, but I thank you for your support. Mrs Bottomley, yeah, I totally agree with you, the earlier we get interventions into children, it can totally transform them lives and help them to maintain themselves in a mainstream school rather than us, you know, firefighting at the end. So again, I thank you for your support, and the damage it does to children that don't get the support they need is lifelong and takes them into adulthood. Ms Graham, Mr Galton, you both sort of mentioned this about the announcement from the government about covering the SEND costs, but like they say, they've not identified where that funding is going to come from, and what we've seen so far is that it could come from the main school budget, which takes funding away from mainstream schools, which is totally the wrong way to go. What's mentioned so far is a 4% decrease in schools' funding. You know, you can't take funding away from mainstream schools, you've got to put more money into mainstream schools, it's totally the wrong decision. So we wait with bated breath, I think, to see what comes out. The delays in the White Paper have had huge concerns for the council and for families. It's unacceptable that this delay has gone on and on and on, and we still don't actually have a date for it yet when it's going to come out. All we know is the new year, well, the new year could run up to August with government sometimes. Just to pick up the points that, you know, I didn't bring this when I was lead member, if you look back, I think I brought many reports and motions to this council and constantly lobbied government for more funding, and, you know, you can look back and for yourself to see what I've done, so I don't accept that. I think that's prompted me this year is that we were keeping a fairly tight lid on the increases in the deficit. It was going up, but sort of by £12, £13 million a year. What we've seen this year is a 60% increase, a 60% increase in our deficit, and that is just unacceptable. We can't carry on like that, the system is broken. Mr Harrison, just to clarify, we're not paying interest on the debt, what we are doing is losing money from not investing that funding that we're holding back to pay off half the deficit, so we're not paying interest on the debt, we're losing interest by not investing that money that we're holding in the bank. And, you know, we need to keep knocking the door, whether you think we'll get anywhere or not, I don't care, I will continue to knock on government's door, and I will never give up fighting for our children of this county. And, Mr King, I agree, you know, we don't know where this funding is going to come from, and Mr Smith, obviously, was my Cabinet Support Member, so he fully understands the system we were working on, and we worked really hard to keep a lid on that deficit. But the YOVA spend is just ridiculous now this year, you know, it's just not sustainable and it's curable, and we need to do something, so that's what prompted this motion. But I thank everyone for their support, and I hope you will all support this motion. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, Mrs Taylor. Right, we're now going to take a vote on the motion. Can all in favour of the motion moved by Mrs Taylor raise their hands? Unanimous, the motion is passed, thank you so much. Moving swiftly on, Community Flood Signage Scheme for Leicestershire. So with the consent of the council, Mr Poland will move the following altered motion. Mr Poland, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. And to be clear, as you said in your comments, to be clear, the motion we're considering today is the one in the order paper and the one I circulated on Thursday night, not the one on mod.gov, just to be, so members are very clear on that point. Flood wardens play a vital role in Leicestershire's flood resilience. These are local people who give freely of their time and energy to help protect their communities from the impact of flooding. They live in their communities, they know their communities, and they are central to how many towns and villages prepare for flooding and cope with the aftermath. I know from my own division, the work, the fantastic work they do. I've spoken to many wardens, not only in my division, but through my day job across the Melton and Seiston area. The message comes back from them repeatedly and very clearly, we do what we can, but if you give us the power to close roads, we can do so much more. We all know that flooding in Leicestershire is becoming more frequent, with residents across the county experiencing disruption and the danger it brings. When roads become impassable, every minute counts, and in keeping people safe and protecting property, while our excellent operational highways teams and the emergency services simply cannot be everywhere at once. Across the border in Nottinghamshire, we have an excellent example of good practice, the Community Flood Signage Scheme. This enables trained community flood wardens, operating with council authority, to deploy signage and temporarily close roads when predetermined flood trigger levels are met. This scheme has been recognised nationally for improving safety, reducing pressure on emergency responders, and empowering communities to act quickly. Mr Chairman, I want to pay tribute to our own volunteer flood wardens, the people who do so much to support our communities across Leicestershire. Their dedication is extraordinary. They go out in the worst weather, late at night, and in hazardous conditions because they care deeply about their neighbours. They are the eyes and ears of our flood response, and our communities rely on them. But our wardens have told us something very clearly, when they see water rising, they watch vehicles plough through flooded lanes, creating dangerous bow waves that pushes water into people's homes, and they currently lack the authority to intervene. They want the ability to close roads when, based on experience and local knowledge, they know a dangerous situation has already arrived. I believe we should give them that authority. A Community Flood Signage Scheme for Leicestershire, supported by proper training, appropriate insurance, and clear operational protocols, could significantly improve the public safety. It could help prevent avoidable accidents, reduce bow wave flooding, and enable a faster, more locally-informed response. We must also, however, acknowledge the challenges. The LLR Resilience Partnership have raised concerns about the resources, if, their resources, if volunteer flood warden services remain under their management. This is why this motion proposes transferring the service to the County Council, so it can be properly supported, supervised, and resourced. Funding for this must be carefully considered as part of the 2026-27 budget. This motion is ambitious, but it is realistic in its scope and timetable. And let me be very, very clear to members, no flood warden will be compelled to take on-road closure responsibilities. For those that do not wish it, nothing will change. But for those who want to step forward, who know their communities best, and who already have the residents' trust, they should be enabled to act safely and legally. Crucially, this motion proposes a practical first step, a pilot scheme focused on rapid response at locations where temporary closures could most reduce the risk to life and property. This can be put in place quickly, using local knowledge, while we work towards a full Community Flood Signage Scheme for the 2026-27 flood season. It will also help residents become more flood-aware and resilient, because whilst we cannot eliminate the risk of flooding, we can certainly work to reduce its impact. Members, this motion strengthens flood resilience, it recognises our dedicated flood wardens, it responds directly to what they have asked of us, and sets out a clear, practical plan to make Leicestershire safer during flood events. This motion tells our volunteer flood wardens, we have heard you, we value the work you are doing, and we are, now, we're giving you the powers to protect our communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Poland. Mr Tilbury, will you second the motion?
Thank you, Mr Chairman, thank you, Mr Poland. I do second the motion, I'll reserve my right to speak till the questions are asked. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr Bray, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chairman. Our group also supports the, the motion. I was sitting, listening to Mr Poland, and it took me back to, not long after I got on this county council, I think Mr Bill was with me at the time, standing in Park Road in my division, literally above, with water up to my knees, and that was, it was the key thing that caused many more properties to be flooded than needed to have been on that night, because what happened was, it's the first sign of surface water, cars sped up to try and get through quickly, and what happened is, as exactly as Mr Poland said, waves were created which went into people's properties. Of course, at that time, you know, people were trying to phone the police and other services who were incredibly stretched because of, because of the incident that was happening, and, and things were made much, much worse. So, yes, total support of Mr Poland's motion, and thank him very much for bringing it to the council.
Thank you, Mr Bray. Mr Mealan, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'll keep my submissions brief, but I'd like to thank councillor Poland for the proposed motion. Witherley Parish falls into my patch, which has already been mentioned in today's meeting, both in the order paper and my councillor Malaney, so I thank the council for drawing attention to flooding in my area more generally. Having worked alongside flood wardens for five years as a parish councillor, I understand the risk of bow wave flooding and how powerless flood wardens can feel in the face of recent flood events. Just this year, Main Road in Sheepy Magna flooded completely, and despite attempts to manage traffic by the flood wardens, HGVs continued to plough through the water, putting properties at risk, including the Black Horse pub. I think it's no coincidence that shortly after this, flooding came to the top of the agenda in local discussions, and so the pilot proposes an excellent starting point to reduce sudden flooding to risk in properties in the market Bosworth Division in particular. And I ask the council to support this motion and look forward to the real difference this will make to residents affected by flooding in my area, particularly in Sheepy, Witherley, and Shenton villages. So thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you much, Mr Mealan. Mr Bradshaw, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. It's a very important motion this, and I'd like to thank Mr Poland for bringing it to full council today. I shall be supporting it, and I ask members to do so also. In January 2025, my division of Seiston Ridgeway suffered the worst flooding in living memory. Over 70 homes were flooded in a very short space of time. We have an amazing group of volunteer flood wardens who assisted residents to save both themselves and their property, but their work was hampered by thoughtless drivers of large four-by-four vehicles and tractors, which were travelling at speed through the floodwater, creating large bow waves. These waves then washed into nearby stricken properties, which had already flooded and exasperated things, damaged and hindered the dissipation of the floodwater. Add to that, there were also drivers of smaller cars who thought that by speeding through the floodwater, it would not affect them. These also broke down and had to be rescued. Had the measures in this motion been in place, our wardens could have prevented much of this with tactical road closures. Heaven forbid we should ever see a flood like the 6th of January 2025 again. If it were to happen, this motion could really help with resilience. I've been doing a lot of work with residents affected by flooding. I'd also like to thank Mr Tilbury, the lead member, our officers for their assistance, and the staff of the highways for the work already done. By working together on this, we're really trying to get a better outcome for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Bradshaw. Mr Squires, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Well, winter is coming. This motion is common sense, and flooding is not a distant threat. Across Leicestershire, surface water and fluvial flooding is becoming more frequent and more severe. I note the excellent work done by this administration in my division, notably in Daisworth, Longwatten, and Breeden-on-the-Hill, where work is currently underway on several schemes which have been delayed for nearly a decade in some cases. The proposal for a Community Flood Signage Scheme, modelled on Nottinghamshire's scheme, offers a practical, community-based way to respond quickly when flooding hits. Trained volunteer flood wardens can deploy signage and temporarily close roads when trigger levels are reached, under the direction of the council's flood risk management team. A CFSS strengthens local resilience, saves lives, reduces pressure on emergency services, and shows that this council is proactive, not reactive, about protecting our communities. Subject to proper training, insurance, and council oversight, this is a scheme I can support. I urge my fellow councillors to back the motion.
Thank you, Mr Squires. Ms Bottomley, please.
Thank you. My division suffers greatly from flooding, particularly the villages of Salisbury and Wymswell. Every event is devastating, and the impact on residents cannot be understated. Some residents would not have to experience this internal flooding if it were not for the bow waves made by vehicles driving through floodwater. Previously, I have called for, as part of a flooding scrutiny group at Charmwood, Leicestershire County Council to explore giving flood wardens the power to close roads in these flooding events, in an attempt to stop this preventable internal flooding. As this notion is walking, working towards that goal, I'll be supporting it today and will continue to push for any and all measures that can work to protect my residents from flooding. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Bottomley. Mr Grimley, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. This is a really excellent motion. I know councillor Poland has been spending a lot of time on this, working with the local flood warden to get this in, to, you know, to get, to bring this to council. I think it is a culmination of a long dialogue, which is good. Yeah, I mean, councillor Bradshaw, I know, has been working very hard in Seiston, working with the flood wardens there as well. I, too, many years ago, was on a flood committee, scrutiny committee at Charmwood, and again, this, you know, this is going back quite historically, one of the main concerns was getting the signs out very early, and also getting the signs in, in as well, which I think is really important. When roads are cleared, the signs should be moved, so people do know, you know, that the road's clear, they can now go down it. A lot, lots of times, because the signs are left out for so, too, too long, people think, oh, I don't know, the road might be cleared, it might not be, let's just go down it and see what happens, and that's, more often than not, they do, they do sort of get stuck there. So, yeah, I think it's a really, really good motion, very important. It's actually something that the council, or as councillors, it's a local matter that we've actually brought here, talked about, put a local motion, hopefully it's got all cross-party support on this, because as, as people do use the word no-brainer, this is really a no-brainer, basically, and I don't think the costs are, you know, substantial for the benefits that the local residents will get. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you much, Mr Grimley. Mrs Taylor, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and I thank Mr Poland for bringing this motion. I know he's worked closely with Mr Tilbury as well, so I thank you for supporting James with bringing this forward as well. So flooding events across Leicestershire are becoming more frequent and severe, putting lives, homes, and transport networks at risk. Delays in road closures during these events can increase danger for residents and emergency responders. Community flood signage scheme would empower trained local volunteers to act quickly and safely under council guidance, reducing risk and improving resilience. We hear repeated reports of vehicles driving through flooded residential streets, as many members here have raised, and this causes additional property damage from bow waves. This must be stopped. Having flood wardens in local communities who can close roads quickly and safely will prevent many homes from being flooded. Nottinghamshire's successful scheme shows that this approach works, enhancing public safety, easing pressure on emergency services, and building stronger communities' preparedness. By piloting this scheme, Leicestershire can take a proactive step towards protecting people and property during flood events.
Thank you, Mrs Taylor. Will we go to the vote? Mr Tilbury, please, do you have closing comments?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. And, yeah, I will second the motion said previously. I do thank Mr Poland for all his hard work on this subject and supporting me on it as well. Remember, it was his question in this council chamber some months ago that set the ball moving. This is why questions to Cabinet are essential in our democratic process. I'll just echo what all the members have said regarding flood wardens. These flood wardens are absolute gold dust to Leicestershire and the country worldwide. The passion, knowledge, and dedication is genuinely humbling, and it's up to us now to give them the tools and the resources for them to perform their duties properly and make Leicestershire flood ready. I'll work with officers, flood warden, and elected members to make this happen, and I will second this motion. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr Poland, would you like to respond to those comments?
Thank you very much, Chairman, and thank you to all members for, that have spoken for your support on, on this motion. I really do feel this is vital for the protection of our communities, as I've said in my speech. This is something that, I don't believe is party political, it's something that members from across our county will have had first-hand experience of, and I firmly believe that we pass this motion today, when it comes in, there will be houses out there right now that will be protected as a direct result of what we're doing today. Okay? This is us in this council making a real contribution to our residents at a really vulnerable time for them. So again, just to thank all members for what they've said today, I hope this, as I say, gets cross-party support. In terms of Mr Grimley's comments around the signs, yeah, absolutely, I would hope that officers would sort of take that on board as part of the implementation process, but I, I believe this is the start of something really, really- But I believe this is the start of something really, really important for our county, and I thank members for that.
Thank you very much, Mr Poland. We will now take a vote on the motion. Can all in favour of the motion moved by Mr Poland, please raise their hands? Yeah, that's unanimous, so the motion is passed. Thank you so much, everyone. So this brings the meeting to a close. Thank you so much. You've got through an awful lot today, so congratulations. Please don't forget, we have a little presentation outside. If you could just hang on a little bit longer and just congregate outside. But my thanks again for a good meeting. Thank you.